Meeting to order at 7:04. First item on the agenda is reserved for changes to the agenda items and order. We all set there? Yes. No changes. Comments and questions from the public not related to the agenda? We're all set there? All right, so here we go. Continue consideration of amendments to the Colchester Development Regulation Supplement 44. And we'll let Kathy start right off with A.
Okay, so I think... We, uh... Just to give you a quick primer on the rest of the agenda. It is... So, most of the agenda is in order of its appearance in the regulations, except for the lake shore changes. That way, if anyone were to come just for that item, they wouldn't have to stay through the rest if they don't want to. So, just respecting the interest we've seen. Bear with me. Mouse is without a battery. 3.07.
Hello. Uh, no worries. We are nowhere yet. Starting at A.
All right. Lake Shore 3, so... We did get through quite a bit of this last time. We did flag a few things specifically to return to. I'll start with the green infrastructure requirements. We were gonna talk about those. If you recall, a lot of those were copied over from LS1 and LS2. They don't exist anywhere else in the regulations except for the lake shore districts. So, where they exist in LS1 and LS2, they are written in such a way that if you were to meet the standard that's outlined, you could increase your coverage on the lot. For LS1 and LS2, you could increase that indefinitely. Conversation as a reminder that the commission had last time was, is it appropriate to keep the same language to increase it indefinitely? I think there was agreement across the board that up to 100% was not the right number. You guys were gonna give it some thought as to, is there a number at all? Or do we just require this and there is no increase? So, your options in considering this are to not have a green infrastructure requirement, to have one but have no bonus attached to it, or to have one and have some level of bonus between what is allowed for coverage, which is about 40%, up to some number of your choosing, up to 100%. I put this one solidly in the bucket of policy that I don't have a strong professional recommendation on.
Lot of the lots that are currently used are pretty much as much coverage as you would think anybody would want. There's limited parking, there's... It's kinda tough even, I mean, especially in this district. It's very interesting, but I don't think you can really increase much lot coverage. There's no green, or the opportunities that are far and few in between.
Yep.
Maybe to stick with the footprint you have and be happy that...
Yeah. What do you think, Sarita?
Um, I just, I'm just a little confused about, so I just need some clarification. So, I was looking at, um... You know, the uses, you know, in Article 1 or Article 10. And I was thinking on LS4, the general categories. I was looking at that. And how that might apply, like, what would be allowed in LS4 would determine to me kind of lot coverage. Like, and maybe I'm way off here, so just correct me up if I'm wrong, but like, it said roadside stands for sale of produce grown on the premises. That was not... You couldn't do that. But I'm thinking on LS4. You know, those lots have big land, you know, a lot of land on them. And if someone wanted to do that, if it was conditional something, then I don't know if that would have anything to do with the lot coverage or limiting it or expanding it.
That's a fair question. I think something to keep in mind is that if you do increase coverage based on a use, that's atypical, that's not very common in how most towns would do it. The other thing I would caution you about is that if you tie it to use, it is very difficult to go backwards. So, if you were to say this particular use could have 80% coverage and that use ceased to exist or become something else, once people have gotten used to that parking or they've put a building there, it's very... I'm not sure you could even legally require them to tear down that building if there was a change in use that you would have associated with something with less lot coverage. So, I think it would be really challenging to tie coverage to use.
Okay, so let's just say someone wanted to open up a little farm stand and grow. I mean, some of those lots look like they could grow some vegetables or flowers or something, and they wanted to have a stand and they could have a way of, you know, coming in and parking and everything like that. Would this limit their ability to do that if we decided it could be a conditional use?
If you had a lot that was large enough to do all of that, my guess is you're not running into coverage issues with the 40% that was allowed. If you had enough space to do that sort of agricultural operation, your parking is gonna be under that 40%. For that particular example, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think it would limit that if that was a chosen use.
Okay, just on the LS4 side.
Yeah.
I feel like, you know, there's a lot of land there if someone wanted to do that.
Yeah. And there are certainly, when you're talking about agriculture, quite a few state exemptions and additional permissions that exist beyond any other use. So, there's some protections in statute, state statute.
So, then would we decide, I'm sorry to take up time, I'm just like trying to think this through. So, when we look at general categories, if it was not allowed, could we make it conditional, a conditional use for this roadside stand for the sale of produce grown on the premises?
Yeah, would it be okay if we talked about the whole table together?
Yep.
If we're not tying it to the green infrastructure?
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to talk through it.
Okay.
I don't think we spent much time on it last time, so.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I was planning on walking through that one, because I don't think we have yet.
Yep. We're getting there. Thank you, Rebecca.
We're just talking about green infrastructure. We've got LS3 and 4. I kind of agree that 3 doesn't really apply. It could apply to some of them in 4, some of the larger lots. I think what we need to do is envision what those increases, what the potential is, and see if that meets our goals and missions for creating these two different zones. See if it's kinda outside our vision for it.
Mm-hmm.
And right now, I don't have that answer. I don't know how we'd go about doing that. Would you look at a typical residential lot and see what that would mean? And then take a look at one of the larger lots?
Yeah, my guess is that that's what the 40% as of right reflects. So, you already have the 40% coverage in there. And it's a question of whether or not you would get a bonus on top of that if you do certain, um... Of, you know, I say especially if you're looking at lakeside, I would wager, um... That a strong majority of those properties are well over 40 already. Probably as high as 80 or 90% of them are well over 40 on the lakeside. So, I think at least on LS3 or the lakeside, I don't know that any bonus you give is really, unless you were talking something closer to 100%. It's either give no bonus or give 100, I think, at that point. Any other number's probably unrealistic.
Yeah.
For 3?
For 3. For 4, there's, I think, a lot more room to carve something out if you wish. You did consider last time maybe having no bonus and just requiring it to happen anyway. But there is a lot of space between 40% and 100. I don't know what the right number would be. The properties are also different. There's a lot of variety on the non-lakeside between some very large properties that don't have much on them already to properties that sort of resemble the ones across the street insofar as... And there's also quite a few shared lots. I don't know that if, even if I found an average, it would tell you much.
On some of these larger lots, I don't know what the acreage is. I think it's around 10, I don't know if they're that large or if they're even larger.
I think that that large one that has the condominium units is over 10 acres or close.
So, let's take that. If that one was 40%, you know, up to the 40% is allowed, what would that look like?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit?
Yeah.
You also kinda have to look at topography of that side of, there's a lot of rock bed underneath. It's per testing and where the water's gonna go once it comes down, rainwater runoffs and the rest of it. I think kinda interesting how much you wanna allow to be built on that side, period.
Yeah.
And what you want it to look like down the road.
Yeah, 40% is pretty much in line with what I have consistently seen in a lot of, um... Mid-size suburban developments, um... You know, when you're talking about your 2 to 3 units per acre type development, 40% is pretty common. It allows people to usually have a home and a few structures and a reasonable driveway. And we don't see people hit that coverage on most lots where we do have that restriction in. So, if somebody comes in and wants to clean the swimming pool or anything, um... It's pretty uncommon for someone to run into a coverage issue unless they're on a very small lot. And that's at 40%.
Okay, and so, I don't know if you can answer this, but when Sarah did the analysis on, this was going to look back to the sewer, what the build-out would be for East Lake Shore Drive?
Mm-hmm.
Was she basing it on the full 40% coverage? Not even beyond it, but at the 40%?
They did it entirely on density in bedrooms and not lot coverage. And so, we have been very careful as we've worked through this to make sure there's not a single extra bedroom or unit that would be allowed beyond what went into that consideration.
So, this over 40% would not increase the number of bedrooms which is related back to the sewer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think realistically, you'd just be looking at either more accessory structures, a little bit more driveway, or even just bigger homes with bigger bedrooms, but still the same number. Same number of units, just probably larger.
Yeah.
So, what would be your thought about, what would the worst-case scenario be in terms of, you know, a landowner coming in and really kind of exploiting the...
Yeah, I think 40, again, 40% is a number that we use in a lot of districts across the town. And it is very rare for someone to come in and say, "I wanna do XYZ. I wanna put in a patio, I wanna put on a deck, I wanna put on a small expansion or a new garage." And for us to tell them, "No, you're over your lot coverage," it's very rare. And the times that we do that is usually on the very small lots, if you're talking about lease lots or mobile home parks or, um... Some of the lake shore lots that are... You really have to be well under a quarter acre lot to come into a coverage issue generally, unless you're really just doing a lot. A lot of stuff. So, 40% is, I would say, more generous than it might sound, more flexible than it might sound.
At 40%, it doesn't sound like we're handcuffing anybody or...
Except for those really small lots. And I'm not trying to pretend they don't exist, because they do. They do exist here. You know, if you wanted, I could, I could look into the number of privately-owned small lots that exist. That's probably your best data point.
Probably most of those smaller lots already have more than their 40% in grandfathered in. It's kind of a...
That's true. I don't think there's a lot that are...
Yeah, because there's going to be some give and take. I mean, 40% is a reasonable number, I think, by the sounds of it. We don't mind the idea, especially since we know we're not growing bedrooms, we're getting a nicer piece of equipment on our property, whatever that is. Personally, I'm not against that.
Yeah. I thought we were just talking about LS4.
Yeah.
I mean, we're all so...
I think we are, right?
Yeah, we're on LS4.
We're only talking about LS4.
I think what I've heard...
Yeah, because LS3, we...
Is it safe to say LS3, no, 40, whatever the cap is, leave it?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's what I've heard.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. If they have 40% or...
That's, yeah.
To that, right?
Yeah.
Probably need the rest of the property to park a car. Yeah, but parking a car is part of the coverage.
Yeah, so then the question is, if you do this green infrastructure, which, to be fair, is not required anywhere else, including on other lake shore properties? So, if you're talking about Lake Point, Red Rocks, Porter's Point, Mills Point, there's no requirement for those towns or those neighborhoods, those zones to do this, so...
Right, they are restricted by septic. So, we're talking about now sewer. So, we're in two different worlds, I think.
Well, yeah, we're really, what you're talking about is stormwater, right? So, when you talk about coverage, so what this is trying to do is have less runoff into the lake.
Sure, and you've got more opportunity if you have a septic tank sitting in your yard.
Yeah.
That helps out.
So...
So, I think we're good.
So, there could be, you know, this is an extra requirement that doesn't exist on other lake-adjacent properties. Um, so you could be very well justified if you wanna give them some extra bonus if they need this, but...
Go ahead, Ed.
Yep. So, is this just a recommendation from the Regional Planning Commission, this green plan that they're suggesting? I mean, there are stormwater regulations, I think.
Yeah, so they've got this tool, this League of Cities in Town has the tool. I don't know the genesis of including it in LS1 and LS2. I've put it here because somebody liked it well enough to put it on East Lake Shore or West Lake Shore. So, I've included it here for you to talk about. I don't know the genesis of why, why it was chosen. I understand it's a, it's a very good tool.
Mm-hmm.
It's a bonus for the land, bonus for the lake.
Yeah.
Correct. But it's all good stuff. And if you can jump through all those hoops and you can wanna build a little bit nicer, bigger, better, I'm not against that, right?
And anything, just to, just to give you some insight too, anything that impacts more than 10,000 square feet of land disturbance is gonna need a local state storm, or a local stormwater permit, anyway.
Okay, that's what I was...
And then, I don't remember the threshold for the state. I think it just changed. Rebecca, you know?
I don't know.
Yeah, it might be a quarter acre, I don't know. But there's a state threshold as well. So, any of these big projects, if you're thinking this, this head acre lot, for example, if they hit 10,000 square feet of land disturbance, they're getting their own stormwater permits regardless.
Okay, good, I just needed that information, thank you.
Answer that question?
So, I'm hearing leave the green infrastructure requirement? No bonus? Same for LS3 and 4?
Yep.
Does that represent...
I think so.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'll shake our heads so far.
Thank you.
So, I'm not gonna edit as we go. I'll just trust that I'll do it, and I'll show it to you next time. The other thing going through that we talked about was whether or not there was a desire to include any sort of aesthetic or design standards associated with LS3 or LS4. This was something I think you guys wanted to go back and think about. We did make some changes.
Yep.
So, this is the draft that was edited last meeting. I've not edited that section since that meeting.
Okay, so we're gonna have a question? You have a question or comment?
Yeah, could you just please take the print larger?
There you go.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Perfect.
All right.
So, I think, I think you guys just wanted to process that and then, I don't know how much of it was wordsmithing or just more general comfort with any sort of shall, should, encourage...
Yeah, we were definitely on board.
Require.
Absolutely. Right, we're still, yeah, we're still on board on that. It has a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
We're definitely on board with the shall and should.
So, I think, let me just scroll up real quick. I think I'm still in LS3 here. Let me just confirm before I start showing you this. Yes, LS3. That's the lakeside. Okay. There aren't a lot of shells in here, but I wanna highlight them for you to make sure you...
So, Kathy, are you in Article 3? And what page are you on?
I am on...
In Article 3, right?
Page 5, Article 3, page 5. In the PDF, if you have the same version as me, it's page 41. But that can get thrown off, I think, based on...
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so... Um... Like I said, there's not a, there's not a lot of shells in those that are in here. I just wanna highlight them for you. All sides of a structure shall receive design consideration. That's a shell, but it's a pretty broad, open shell. Um, I'm sorry, I'm on 3.07. Oh, sorry, number 3, D3. So, this is the, the section that talks about sort of some design criteria. I think your, your direction last time was you just wanted to continue to think about it. Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't want anything concrete. We don't have anything concrete. And I think that's all good suggestion, sorry.
And just so you know, I don't feel married to any of this. This is, again, this is very strongly policy-oriented. I don't think that...
We're just hoping to get people building thinking, hopefully, in a right direction. That's our goal. I think it's pretty well stated.
You did make a few changes. I know it was like a month ago. There had been something about flat roofs not allowed. You changed that to discourage, just as a reminder. Um... You know, I think that, I think it's fairly broad with still having some... These are really things, there's like a, if you were to look at a menu, I think there's like, you have to do some things on a menu, but it's a pretty broad menu.
Yeah.
Um, I think the goal is that this, this ensures that you don't get a very basic box with no windows and a doorway and no attention given whatsoever to the lakeside of the road. But I think it still leaves a lot of flexibility for, without prescribing that it must be, um, cornist windows or...
Yeah.
And the DRB gets to look at it as well, correct?
Yeah, they'll probably hate me for it.
I'm just saying.
Yeah. You know, realistically, when, when my staff goes to review a DRB application under this, they're gonna say, "Okay, here's my menu," right? And they're gonna say, they're gonna look for any of these things and do a few check marks. And realistically, if they see that none of them are provided, they're gonna flag that. And if they see that somebody included windows and any, you know, four or five of these elements, they're gonna say, "Four or five of these have been included." And then the board can go from there as to negotiate whether that's appropriate.
Yeah.
I don't think it's strongly prescriptive, but it does set some expectation to not have a box with one of those elements.
That's our goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's our goal, absolutely. It's not easy. You have anything on that one?
Yeah, just again, like, I was looking at heights and fences, you know, and just views of the lake. You know, I think what I heard from the public comment was preserving view, views, and, um... I just, I guess it's for me, when I drive that, down that road, it just irritates me that it feels like automobiles rule that road as opposed to pedestrians. You know, just as I was coming here, it was a family of five, you know, with two little children trying to cross the road to get to LS4. You know, they had been at the beach. And I just feel like the use of that, you know, access to the bay for beachgoers. I feel like there should be four crosswalks along East Lake Shore Drive. You know, and I know it would slow traffic down and probably irritate people, but I just feel like inhabitants, you know, should be able, we talked about accessing, you know, increasing access. And I, I think it's unfortunate that people have to take their lives in their hands to cross that road. And I just would wanna shift a little bit the thinking, you know, to make it easier for pedestrians to have egress, I guess that's what, inaccess, to be able to cross that road and get to the lake.
I'm not sure what we can do in the development regulations.
When Brian Osborne rips that road up.
That's not what we're discussing.
But that's all right, when Brian Osborne rips a road up, that's, that's the person you wanna grab.
Because it does say considers challenges to and resulting...
Yeah, and I think some of that parking language that we talked about might help.
Yeah.
Um, you know, about not, not forcing a vehicle's rear end to hang into the street.
But when I look, like, at Marble Island, they have crosswalks there, and they're not attached to any sidewalks. They don't go to sidewalk to sidewalk.
Right.
You know, so I don't understand why we've put crosswalks in. I don't know. You live on East Lake Shore Drive.
The Planning Commission cannot put them in, is, I guess, all I can say.
Oh, the Plan, okay.
The Planning Commission. Whether the town can or not is a question for a different department and a different board.
Okay.
But the Planning Commission can't just say, "Thou shalt..."
Make it easier to access?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Good.
Yep.
Rebecca? So intrigued to hear from Rebecca on the design pieces.
No, as long as it's not dictating what has to go there, and I think...
Do you think it achieves it, or do you have recommendations?
Yeah, I think if someone came to the DRB with a box, let's say, no penetration on the face of the street, they wouldn't get it through, as it sounds like, anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, lacking a design review board, I think, pretty much the best we can...
Do you feel like it leaves it open enough that it, it allows a variety of creative approach?
I think so. I think so.
I heard that was another concern.
Yeah, I mean, as is pointed out, you know, things that aren't exactly flat, but maybe a low-spoke roof or something, there's ways of doing it that are pleasant-looking. I'm just hoping that the DRB wouldn't really see this and say, "Okay, flat roofs are discouraged." But they say, "No, no flat roofs." It's, it's kinda subjective.
Yeah.
Um, and it depends on who's on the DRB at the time, like, uh... But I think it's worth a test. I think we have to do something.
Is that phrase one that you wanted to revisit?
I don't know how else to say it. It's a, you know, most people like the cottage style, the cottage look. That's fine. I don't like to tie designer's hands.
Yeah.
I think it's worth a go, because we can't continue the way, the way it's going.
You want to probably get what?
If you'd like to have a suggestion... If you'd like to have a suggestion, please, you have to step up to the mic and state your name, even though we're not doing that, but we'll take it.
My, my name's Jason, like, wait, I live on, um, South Bay Road.
Okay.
Jason, can you spell your last name for me again? I'm sorry.
Del apostrophe, capital E, C U Y E R.
Thank you.
I don't really have a dog in this fight, other than I just read through that and it, that looked to me like it said, don't be a jerk. If you're a jerk and you apply, the DRB is going to make you do something to make it aesthetically appealing. I, I think it looks fine.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Alright, that's about what we're looking for.
Okay, I'm gonna slide down. Um, just as a reminder for the audience and for, um, the commission, uh, we are still very early in this process, even though it feels like we've been talking about it for a little while. We still have to have a meeting that we would warrant a hearing in, so that's another meeting that's not a hearing. Then we would have to have a warned public hearing, so that's another opportunity. That could take one or more meetings. Then there is a select board warned public hearing, so at the very, very least, there are three more opportunities to think, comment for, um, the public and for board members as you continue to think on this or see something that inspires you somewhere or, um, so at least three more, just as a reminder. Um, okay.
Absolutely. Hang on, wait.
Can I ask one question?
We have one more question.
I was just wondering about the parking areas, not expanding it or anything, but they just all seem so different on the LS3 side. Is there any way to standardize it a little bit more so it doesn't look so ragged?
I think it's very hard because so much of that is grandfathered. Um...
I mean, I would change the size or the amount of parking space they have, but just to make it, you know, some has grass and gravel and some has like, I don't know, they're all different and I just didn't know if there was a way to get it a little bit more cohesive along the road.
I think that goes under the, no. A lot of them are already grandfathered and been there for enough years. And you can't ask somebody to dig up their driveway they've been parking on for 20 years and put grass there.
Or stone.
Or whatever the case may be.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm realizing my markup was turned off. There we go. Sorry about that. Um, so parking, did we, we, did we finish that last time? You guys were comfortable with the parking? Or did you wanna go back to that? I think that was in LS3. I can't remember, I'm sorry. So the parking.
Parking.
So this was something, I threw a spaghetti at the wall for you to think about. It does not exist in LS1 and 2. So that's this section E here, additional standards for all lots in LS3. No expansion of vehicle use in parking areas may be permitted unless they are located to the side of principal building. So again, this is for ones that are new parking areas. Anybody who comes in and says, hey, I wanna just expand my parking, I'm still under 40 percent, this says, you can't put it in front of the building unless, um, or even to the side, unless a vehicle can park outside of the right of way. So you can't create a new parking area that is six feet deep, for example. Standard parking space runs about 18 feet deep. Um, and about nine feet wide. It's a little bit larger than a vehicle, so you don't open a door into people. But, um, so we would be looking for a number if you like this language that showed that a vehicle could be outside of the right of way. So somebody comes in with a six by six space, says this is my new parking area, this would allow the board or staff to say no. You put a vehicle here, half of it is over the white line and into the road. Beyond that, it also states that you have to be able to enter and exit that space without backing onto the road. Spaghetti at the wall? I could, it's a little strong. Um, it's meant to reflect what I'd heard from a lot of folks at our meeting about some of the issues. Um, so this would say, if the only thing you have is that nine by 18 space and, yep, it's just off the road, the only way to get in and out of it is to back onto the road, that wouldn't be allowed.
This is only for new construction?
This is for new parking areas, so wouldn't impact something that exists today.
Right.
It's if you come in and say, hey, now I've got eight bedrooms because the sewer is in and I'm gonna put, I need more parking.
Go ahead, come on up to the mic, give your name, please.
Ken Puzey, I live on East Lake Shore Drive. So for E1, when I read that, I read, you're, you're forcing people to park on the side of, of their house and, remember we said we, we valued having lake view. Well, now you're putting more vehicles blocking lake view by forcing them to the side of the building, so that's my comment.
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to do better with my minutes this time.
So we're gonna catch DL because we do not want anything else in that road. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah.
So that would mean people could back into that space, right?
But it's 18 feet deep.
Yeah, I think that's something that Rebecca brought up last time.
Bob, don't it, brought that about the document. I know that there's some spaces, uh, this is more, I went to park on South Bay Building with LS4 and you pulled in and you had to back out into the road. It's very scary. So what I tend to do is you back into the driveway so that when you're leaving, it's a little bit safer. But I thought, I would have something to say about backing into that.
Um, one of the state statutes, you're not supposed to back out into a thoroughfare basically.
Yeah, but you can back up in that.
You can back into your spot, so you go past it and you back in and you pull out, because when you're backing out, you can't see. I just happened to pull it up online real quick to be sure I was right.
Alright.
So, and that is something if somebody does, it's almost, oh, if you wanna do that, great, but we're letting you know now, you gotta pull past your driveway and back in. You can't whip in quick and then back out and expect traffic to stop for you.
Yeah, so to, it, it's a very dense paragraph. I think there are three decision points for you here. One is, um, as, as was pointed out, is, is it, would you like it to include that parking, new parking? New parking should be to the side, or would you prefer it to the front, or is there no preference? So that's a decision point for you that I'd like to hear, um, on. The second is the idea of a space sufficient for a vehicle not on the road. I think I've seen a lot of head nods on that one. And then the third is, does the space also have to allow you space to maneuver off the road? Or is it sufficient to have a space that's big enough and hope people do what the law requires of them by backing in? So I think those are the three decision points.
Go ahead.
So what's the rationale for the side, parking on the side of the house?
I think it's just, it's, uh, it's, it's standard language in, uh, in some of other, our other districts about parking to the front, um, of, and when we say side, um, it means not in a front yard. I guess I should clarify that. So it wouldn't be allowed in that front yard space. Otherwise, you know, I don't, I think it's about having the presence of a building typically. I shouldn't say just to LS3, but when you talk about no parking in front of a building, it's so that it, it enhances theoretically the pedestrian experience and because you are, you're feeling building, you're not going down a road and just feeling cars. That is the idea, whether or not that outweighs the concern about the view of the lake being better than the view of the house. So theoretically, you would not wanna block the view of a nice structure, but in this case, there might be a competing view.
That is, you know, that is the thing totally.
Yeah. So that's decision point one.
So first you have to have enough room to be able to back park in front of the house. That's rule one.
If it was a new parking area.
If it's a new parking area. So they have to have the 18 feet minimum.
18 feet or can they park parallel?
Or parallel. Yeah, parallel would be preferred.
Yeah.
I think it makes it easier for everyone.
Yeah.
Pull in, pull out.
Yeah. As long as they have enough room.
As long as they have enough room.
Yeah, safely pull in, pull out.
Yeah.
So on LS3, just, in most cases, there's limited space to even put more parking us on the side. Do we determine that in LS3 you don't allow any more parking? You're all pretty well filled to the max as it is.
Well, I suppose that's a fourth decision point that I didn't raise. Yeah, no new parking areas at all is an option.
Yeah, that, that would also stop people from putting too big of a place where there's no place for anybody to park that lives there.
So that is an option, yes.
Just another question. If someone tears down a building, is that considered new construction? If they were gonna rebuild it, you know, on the footprint of the original structure?
Yeah, so generally when we review those, um, if they have a well-established area for parking that is largely dependent on where that footprint is, they'd be allowed to keep that. Um, if it was impervious, that was a patio and now they wanna make it parking, that's still a new parking area, if that makes sense. Um, so you have to be reasonable because if, if somebody were to rebuild their building and suddenly you say no parking. But we would look at historical photographs and try to figure out, um, has there been creep lately that comes up? Creep happens, um, where somebody has had a space or two associated, but in the last two or three years, suddenly they have four more spaces. So we would say that's not permitted with a tear down and rebuild. Yeah.
What's our, um, what's our requirement for parking on a regular?
You mean by number?
Yeah.
Two?
So we, minimum, maximums two.
You don't have a maximum.
No maximum, so we start with two, cause there will be no creep. You can put four out there for the fact that you can fit four.
Again, this is like the, to address the people who are coming in saying, I want more.
Where they, where they gonna put them? So what we wanna make sure is they can have all they want, but they have to make sure it's safe, but then our requirements. So if you can't put more, cause you can't get the 18 feet, how can you put beside the house or in front of the house?
When you might not say, as Bob said, you can have all you want. You might just say, no, no more.
No, no more. Yeah, it's possible. On LS3, I doubt there's any way you could fit it.
And this, this language is not proposed for LS4, just to be clear. This is LS3 alone.
It's LS3, exactly. To me, if you look at those lots, if you've spent any time, they've got them pretty well max parked, hard surfaces as you can get.
Yeah.
I can't think there's anywhere, if you drive around and look at them, to add four parking spaces.
Yeah, some of it is formalizing it, where it wasn't formalized before. I have an application in right now where they are proposing three new spaces. A tear down and rebuild, had been grass.
So that, that's a good example. So they want three new spaces.
In addition to the two they already have?
I don't remember how many they already have. They just labeled them as new.
Right, so the three new spaces that they want, as of right now, if they're six by six, you really can't do much about it. Is that right?
If they already have those spaces, yeah.
These are three new ones.
These are three new, no parking area spaces, not three units.
No, that's what I mean, three new parking spots.
Oh, yes.
So they wanna stick them in there, but right now, we're saying, what?
Right now, it's really up to the DRB.
Cause they can't get the right of way. We can't get, we can't get them into the right of way. There's no way, right?
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, there's no way they get into the right of way those parking spaces, no matter what. That's, that's...
Right, right, absolutely.
So even though if they want three new spaces, they will have to have enough room to pull those cars off the main road.
Yes.
No matter what.
Yes.
Correct?
Without this language.
Without this language?
Yes.
Okay.
How much lot coverage would that change?
The right of way line there is pretty tight.
Oh, yeah. Well, I, I actually have no problems with controlling the parking lot, but to keep people doing, cause you're, you're right, people just scream in there and their cars are hanging out all the time, or their motorcycles or whatever, and then they start talking. Before you know it, they're in danger for themselves. See it all the time, so...
Yeah, I mean, I, as you guys know, I mean, parking just came up as such a big issue in the, in our outreach and so I wanted to have something in here for you to respond to. But it's, it's new and it's different and it's...
In most cases, if you're increasing parking, you're also increasing impervious surface, correct?
That is true.
So in this area on the side of the lake, for all we're fighting to clean our lake up to allow them even to have any more parking spaces, kinda makes me, how much lot coverage do you have in grandfathered and in the rest? That's just...
Yeah.
Alright, we'll give you three more spots and the water can run in the lake that much faster.
It's a tough one because you're building a new building. We don't want people crossing the street as much as possible. They'll find parking somewheres, right? I mean, that's just the nature of the beast. People who come to visit, they will find parking somewheres. So they find it across the street, the neighbors, in one of the neighborhoods, start walking the road. We don't want that. We definitely don't want any vehicles in the right of way, so we, we eliminated that. We don't wanna, we don't park a lot, right?
Especially, like I said, on that side right next to the lake.
I'm amazed that there's somebody that can put three more parking spaces or ask for three. You're right. Every single lot, it seems, is maxed. Been there for 50, 100 years. If we say no more parking spaces, where do you have to go on pictures? Cause that's...
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we look through historical ortho photography where you can see parking areas.
And what they're using now has to be off the right of way, obviously.
Um...
Right?
You know, we don't, I mean, I don't know what the police do. Planning and zoning certainly doesn't go by and see.
No, yeah, and I understand that part, but my idea is...
And you drive down on a Saturday, you know that there's a lot of, I think you can ask anyone who lives in the neighborhood, there's probably a lot of people who were parked over.
Yeah.
And that might be their only parking. And maybe it's that they were supposed to have one car that fit parallel and they're like, well, we can fit three if we do this and pull in straight. Um, it's tough to figure out what people have, I mean, you can't take, you can't take exist, you can't take the full extent of existing parking away because then you render your home unusable, but...
Our, our problem isn't with what's there now, obviously. We're gonna, we're allowed that. So our problem is, what do we do about new stuff?
Yeah.
I do like that it kinda states what they're looking for in parking.
Yeah.
Say that again. I like that it states what we're looking for for parking, to try to make the streets safer. And I hear about the view, but there's not too many properties that have a side yard that would meet these standards. It's pretty tight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, someone would have to probably buy the lot next door, tear, tear down the structure and put parking in. You can see that, but then you'd have cars instead of a two-story house.
I think largely this would address the people who are trying to formalize what they're already doing, that maybe they shouldn't be doing.
Sure, come on up.
Well, Linda and Al from Lake Shore Drive. Some of the properties across on L3 are camps and they're closed, and then others are homes. So how does that play in when they're talking about snow removal and all of those components for when somebody's actually living there in the wintertime? How does that play into the parking piece?
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, snow, the extra tricky thing is that, um, you can't do, you can't officially do a site plan or apply site plan standards to a single-family home in Vermont. It's exempt from site plan review. And snow storage is something that we look at in a site plan... And snow storage is something that we look at in a site plan review for, as a site plan standard for lots that could be, so it's, it's pretty cha, it, it's common sense. But from a, uh, legal review perspective, I think it would be very, it'd be very hard to consider that because it is a site plan standard. Um.
So I think we're s, we're happy about the idea that we think there should be something. Correct? We're all looking at, yeah.
Yeah. We're all looking like there should be something.
Some type, and this is the start of a direction. Now, you haven't limited anything on this, other, other than the fact that this is what's expected. So the three new spots come in under this, you will look at them, you'll say, this is the, this is the criteria. If you fit this, you will get your three new spots.
How do you feel about the parking in the front of the building? I think some guidance there would be.
I personally, if you can make it safe, would just soon have it in front of the building. It doesn't bother me that much, only because on LS three, the, it's such a tight road anyways.
Right.
You know, it's, it's just so tight.
Do you know if the sewer, like with the road and kind of getting up the homes, is that gonna either expand the opportunity for parking or will it keep it exactly the same? Do you know?
Yep. That's a good question. I had no idea.
I believe that the intention is not to make any impacts there.
Yeah.
Could we just, could we, would you be able to ask Brian like just that question?
Yeah, I'm sure he's gonna tell. I, the intention I know, cause it came up in the, in the sewer discussions, is that there, am I, am I right, Pam? That there's no impact on.
There's no impact.
There's no need to buy right of way, there's no need to tear down homes for it.
But it's not gonna expand, it's gonna stay the same. The road is gonna stay the same, and then whatever parking people had is gonna remain the same.
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak to striping if a shoulder width will change or something, but I don't, I don't think that's the, I think it's gonna look a lot like it does now, just pressure. So, um, just because this one's super easy, am I hearing, I at least heard from Rich and maybe a nod from Sarita, that there was no strong desire to keep the side of the building? That would mean removing that highlighted section there?
No.
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent on that.
No?
No.
I mean, if you don't have the room in front of your house, you know, the place you can put it is, is on the side. Otherwise, you have no parking. Um, I think it has to, something has to be in there. Like I said, most of the properties don't have a side to them, but there are a few properties that you could.
Well, this won't force. She takes that out, this is, gives you both opportunities to be in the front and on the side.
And she's taking it out.
Yeah, so it takes it out from the unless, so it says, it, it doesn't require you to be, if you could put it in the front, you could.
Yeah.
As drafted here, you would not be able to put a new parking area in the front.
I see, okay. So this would give the option of front for more sides?
Yes. If I remove that, it would give them the option in the front.
Especially if the building new, they will take that into consideration for, with whatever the building. The door comes out the side, walkway.
A lot of this might be a moot point too, because they already have the excellent coverage they can have on the lots anyhow.
This might apply to one property on the whole street, who knows?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
You might be working way too hard for something that they can't do anything anyhow.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So I think I, I think I saw, heard.
Yep.
Some of these edits I'm gonna make later, but since I'm right here.
Yeah.
Just gonna do it right in front of you.
Yep.
Um, okay. Um, let's keep going, I think.
Can you just say what page and articles?
I'll let you know when I stop.
Great, thank you.
This one's highlighted, but you talked about it, so this was that ceiling for coverage. You've said, so basically, we'll take this whole thing out, no increase for green infrastructure. Actually, what the heck, I'm right here. Um, but keep the requirement, I think is what you said.
Yep.
So we're still in LS three, right?
You are in LS four now. Yeah, article, so they're both in article three. Uh, I think that this is very similar language as far as the design standards go. You didn't make any changes to those. Um, the other, okay, so now I'm gonna jump. Cause the other pieces that involve LS three and LS four are those tables. Are you okay jumping to that section? Okay. Give that a quick save. So we talked at length. I think they're stored separately. I may have to show you this, but they'll make edits. I don't seem to have the raw one here. Sorry, I couldn't get on the network, so I had to put things on the thumb drive, and it looks like I put the same table twice. There it is. So I will zoom in in a moment, just faster to scroll. So. Dimensional standards. We talked at length about the appropriate height limits. You guys agreed to leave forty feet for LS four. That is consistent with what is allowed for the building height in R two, which is what it currently is and what's sort of in the neighborhoods behind it. LS three, we talked about, um, I think we'd had twenty feet in as a placeholder. What we talked about is that twenty feet does not get you two stories. Unless you have a flat roof, it's almost impossible. Um, if you are the way that we measure, so we measure to the peak. Um, I looked at a lot of examples of two, basic two stories without like vaulted, um, or really tall ceilings. Uh, largely what I kept coming up with for a traditional two-story was about twenty-five point five feet. Does that sound for a, uh, sorry, I, twelve on six pitch?
Standard roof pitch, let's just call it that.
Is that standard?
I believe so.
Yeah.
But I'm not a builder.
Yeah, so for a standard roof pitch, twenty-five and a half, twenty-five feet, six inches would get you two stories.
Could they still do, uh, like if on the slope, like a walkout basement, two stories and a walkout basement?
Yeah, so, so something to keep in mind is it wouldn't necessarily be two stories at the road level. So we measure from average pre-construction grade. So if you are on a slope, as most in LS three are, um, you're starting to measure below the road grade. So if the road grade is here, you're not measuring it from the very bottom point, again, it's the average pre-construction, so you take the four points of the building and you figure out what the average elevation is between those four. And you measure from that point. And it's there to the top. So you would not necessarily on those properties have two stories at the road. Cause you're not measuring from the road.
So you have one story maybe on the slope side and then one story at the road?
Depending on the slope.
Can I kind of see if I can get this right? So let's say you got a ten-foot slope. You got two points that are on the top, two at the bottom, that means you five foot starts where you do it.
Yep. So you're five feet below road grade level.
To start with.
To start with, and then you're twenty feet above that according to this.
Is the bottom of the slope where the water is or where the building starts?
Where the building is, so average pre-construction.
And is that, so let's say.
So you can't build it up. The reason we use that language is you can't put yourself a mound in and then build it on top of that. And say, I'm starting from up here.
Yeah.
So you would not be able to build up that slope.
Yeah.
Flatten it all out and do twenty-five feet. So average pre-construction.
And I assume that some of the measurements from the bottom have to be so many feet above the high watermark because of flood constraints.
Yes, or else they have to meet certain floodproofing designs elements. Um, but again, keep in mind that a lot of these are rebuilds. They use the same foundation. Um, and so their, their points are set for them as to what they're starting from.
So do we want to limit it at thirty feet or twenty-eight or? Cause twenty-five and a half is.
Yeah.
Minimal, give them a little bit of leeway.
And again, this is making a broad assumption that you were looking at two-story buildings.
Which we were.
If you are not, then that's not the right number either. If you're looking at one or, I don't know, one and a half.
It's interesting looking from the water, how many are going straight up with like even almost two sometimes stories below the road and then two above. Um, it's just interesting. It's just kind of very straight.
Yeah, I, I had hoped, Pam and I have talked about getting onto the beach side. Now that the, I, I'm not familiar enough with what is present on the lakeside, on the lakeside of the lakeside.
Yeah.
Um, and how many are, are really built up below what you can see. Um, I'd hope to bring you that sort of information, but.
Sounds like a boat trip.
Yeah, kayak trip, maybe, I don't know, let's see.
More.
Boat trip?
More.
Bob's gonna take us. Um, so I think you need a little more than twenty-five feet if you are looking at, I didn't see anything less than twenty-five point five. Steeper pitches were closer to twenty-seven or twenty-eight. But those are pretty atypical pitches. Um, probably.
So twenty-eight, thirty? We know we don't want tight. We could be back on that one.
Rebecca, does that include a basement? Does that include a basement, two stories down the road?
Yeah, I, I don't think most, most of those properties are taking advantage of every square foot they have. So it could be like a walkout.
I mean, do you have a basement and then two stories?
Yeah, I mean, basement is a, is a, a term that's, doesn't mean that much when you're, it, it could be ground level, but still living space. Or below grade at the road, but. So it could theoretically be three depending on the pitch of the, from the lakeside.
Uh-huh.
But you would not see three on the roadside at twenty-eight feet. Unless you had a very flat, flat, flat lot. You'd be really tight at twenty-eight feet for a pitched roof.
I don't believe there's a flat lot on LS three.
Um, and then most of these have a different height for a flat roof, which we didn't talk about, but. Um, so you could have a second height listed. Most of them are about five feet less if you're not having any sort of pitch on it.
We're doing all we can to discourage a flat roof anyhow, so why not do that as well? You're gonna go that route. Twenty-eight with a standard roof and twenty-two with a flat. That'll help discourage it even more.
Yes, that gives you about eleven feet per floor, which should be enough for.
They're all nine-foot ceilings, that's for sure. That's standard.
Is nine standard now?
Actually, it's eight feet.
No, I mean, now if you go into the new houses, they're all on nine feet.
But for the small cottages, it's usually eight feet or below.
Yeah, well, they're gonna, when they build from scratch, they'll go with the max every time.
Yeah, so to put it in context, I, I did look at some of the newest rebuilds.
I was gonna answer.
Those pretty much hit their forty feet.
Yeah.
Forty feet, okay.
Like right.
They're on flat lots, too.
Those ones are, yeah, they're sort of, some of them. But, yeah, they hit their forty feet, and it, and it's challenging for us. We can't get out there and drop a tape from the top.
Right.
Um, we do ask them to certify it through an engineer whose professional credibility or their, or their architect is on the line, it's the best we can do. But those were permitted within two feet of forty feet, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-nine and a half.
Yeah.
Every single one of them.
So if we looked at the tallest one on East Lake Shore in the LS three and took ten feet away from that, that would be above what we're looking at in terms of maximum?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna vary at what you see on the road based on what that slope is, but generally.
Roughly, okay.
You take ten feet away, you take a story away generally.
Okay. I, I like that.
You like that?
Yeah.
Bob, yeah?
Yeah.
Rebecca?
So when you get closer to the east end of East Lake Shore Drive, where it does flatten out, you could have a house. Whatever you decide when you leave it.
Yep. Yep. Kind of give and take deal.
I'm just trying to envision all the houses.
Well, it's, it's three sto, I mean, twenty-eight feet, please correct me. Twenty-eight feet on a flat lot, you're not getting much of a pitch, right? Eight-foot ceilings, that's twenty-four of it. You put in space between.
Yeah, I think it's not unusual. And a lot of pitches in Vermont are steeper than six-twelve.
Okay.
Builders like six-twelve, so it's deeper than that, so.
So twenty-eight, does twenty-eight feet on a flat lot get you three stories and a pitched roof? I don't, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah.
You could probably, someone might, might stick a dumper out there, you know, here the pitched roof.
Okay. So I heard twenty-eight feet for a pitched roof. And I heard Bob throw out a shorter number, twenty-three for a flat, but I didn't hear anyone else weigh in on that. Did you want a difference for a flat?
It'd be worthwhile. It's definitely, it definitely would probably look like a three-story building if it's on a flat lot.
On a flat lot, yeah, with a flat roof, you could do three stories.
Yeah, there'd be a lot of flat roofs.
At twenty-eight.
Yeah. If we don't do anything, they'll be all flat roofs. No matter how discouraging we would like to say.
So I'm hearing twenty-three for a flat?
Yeah.
So when people spoke at the public hearing about maintaining the character of East Lake Shore Drive, would, do you envision that this kind of regulation would help to meet that with us?
You know, and nothing is gonna keep it exactly what's there, but I think that the newest buildings, from what I understand, are a full-story taller than most of what's existed there historically. I don't know that there's anything that would have hit forty feet that's older than maybe the last ten years. Does that sound?
Even less.
Having not spent a lot of time out there ten years ago.
Yeah.
Does that sound, I don't know, for anyone who's.
That'd be the oldest. Or less than five.
Less than five?
Yeah.
So I think, you know, does it get you that camp character? Not necessarily, cause again, as we've said, it's very hard to define. But it doesn't let you get as far away from it.
Good.
If that makes more sense.
Yep.
Okay.
That's our goal.
Okay, so you guys are comfortable with?
Yep.
Twenty-eight, twenty-three, leave forty for LS four. I don't think.
LS four is fine.
I don't think taking five feet off, that's gonna do much. I don't know that there's much benefit for a flat roof size, but. I don't think taking five feet off that's gonna do much, I don't know that there's much benefit for a flat roof size, but we could do it. The others say thirty-five. You wanna be consistent?
Are we talking L S four?
L S four, yeah.
Yeah.
So thirty-five for a flat roof.
Sure, or if it's the same.
I don't know that it does much, to be honest with you, but it keeps it consistent with.
It says it's thirty-five flat for commercial.
Yeah.
And L S one.
Yeah, let me scroll up a little, show you something a little. Let's look at a typical R two. So R two, forty foot to the ridge, thirty-five to the flat. Oh, sorry, you guys, it's not showing up.
Let's cut off on my end.
Sorry, it, yeah, I see that now. There we go. So R two, everything else distinguishes between original flat?
I see.
Oh, there's one interesting thirty-four foot one, I don't know if that was a typo.
Oh yeah, I see it.
It's like haha GD four at the bottom.
That's funny.
Yeah, we can be consistent with that.
You wanna be consistent?
I'm good, yeah, absolutely.
Maybe in a future update, we'll figure it out if we should get rid of all the differences with flats there, but. Okay, so L S four, forty, thirty-five.
Yep.
Oh GD four gets, gets a little bit more.
Yeah, that's the wacky one, I don't know what's going on there, Eve Rich.
Yeah.
Oh, I, that's, no. GD three is the form base code, so I don't know what's going on there. We're not gonna go to X on the list. So we're just gonna ignore that one. Um, I think that there's two more things to discuss with respect to anything on East Lake Shore. That is the table of uses, I think you guys talked about it last time, but I'm hearing, I think we made it all the way through it, but I.
Definitely.
I don't know if you wanted.
Is that the general category?
Yes.
Had a question about farm sand or something.
Well, functions in restaurants. And cultural facilities and marine repair services.
And you did.
None of those can be on East Lake Shore Drive?
So let me go to the top here. And I do wanna at least acknowledge both for the record and as a point that was raised, you all in your packet. Received an email from Rick Davy. Um, to be clear, he provided those comments before the draft was out, so his. His comments were in response to the original draft and not, so he sent those to me before this was shared. Um, he did raise a question about a use, I think with respect to multifamilies. He also raised a question about, um, mobile homes not being permitted. Um, I will tell you on the record that if you allow a single-family home, you must allow a mobile home.
I thought he asked more mobile home parks.
And then he also said mobile home, I think. Cause the park's not allowed. So the park is not a P, but there was something, I do have the letter if you guys. So just to, just to put it on the record.
And not, not multifamily?
Um, again, his comments came in ahead of the sharing of the building types, which we're gonna get to next. And so it was, you know, when somebody says multifamily, it could be anything from three units to fifty. And that's what currently existed in the regs, so I, I think having spoken to him directly. His, his fear about the multifamily was, was thinking about something bigger than four.
Two or four.
Um. I, but I, I don't wanna speak for him, other than what his email says. Um. Mobile homes should not be allowed in L S one for L S four as well as mobile home parks. Um, but again, I'll tell you, fair housing law is very strong. If you allow a single-family, you must allow a mobile home, period.
Yeah.
You, you can't choose, so. Um, you can not allow mobile homes, but only in places where you do not allow a single-family home, so. Little insight there. Um. Any other comments on the use table at all? Do you wanna go through them? Do you wanna just respond to questions?
You have questions, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I was just thinking, it looks like, uh, there already is a marine repair service on East Lake Shore Drive, but.
What number are you at?
So I'm at two point three hundred on page five.
Two point three hundred, I love that they're numbered.
Yeah.
Well, the question, again, I would keep in mind, this isn't about permitting what exists, it's about permitting new uses. So if you were to allow marine sales, it means somebody could tear down their house and put in a marine sales shop. Anything that's there is grandfathered as long as it doesn't cease its use for more than six months.
I'll just, this is just my opinion, but I, under conditional use, I'd love to see, you know, a marine repair services. If someone wanted to do that, cultural facilities, which is at five point four hundred. A restaurant with outdoor seating, a small restaurant with outdoor seating, eight point one hundred. Those were the three that I.
So Rita, just to be clear, were you talking about L S three or four or both?
Um, I think it was L S three and L S four.
Just making a note for the minutes.
There's been a lot of chat, I don't know if you've seen it, if anybody has seen it on the front porch forum. About Colchester and amenities, and it, it goes back and forth, you know, people don't wanna look, probably fifteen comments on there. Um, don't wanna look like Essex or Williston. But there's another group that would really like more amenities, you know, small restaurants, a coffee shop. On East Lake Shore Drive or in general? Well, they didn't say specifically, I think they said in Malibu.
So we're permitted all up with L S one and L S two for that.
Right, right.
When, once we got to L S three, we were more calm about putting commercial use out there, I think that was our drive, right?
It was our drive. The other issue was like, you said, you know, the marine repair shop or something. Now you're talking about parking more traffic on that road, I think that's where we're kinda coming from, we want to discourage. A lot of traffic like that. It's kinda reserved for West Lake Shore Drive. Well, I think as long as that one is grandfathered in, you know, it's just, um, I just think there's gonna be more boating. You know, more marinas and more need for maintenance and services, but I, I think, you know, a coffee shop, a small coffee shop. Again, a chance for the community of East Lake Shore Drive, you know, to, to have a place where they, you know, can cross paths with one another. People were, and people were talking about how, you know, that, I don't know, it just seemed like the people who wanted.
So.
More amenities, wanted more opportunities to meet community members, you know, have a place to gather, meet people.
Something that I would offer you, I, I would recommend at, at this level to not include those. But we've talked about adventuring into these building typologies. So when you talk about a small coffee shop, um, what is that, right? What is small? Um, should you wish to after the supplement say, boy, if something. Looked and felt like a single-family home and served coffee, that's sort of what's my vision. Um, again, I'm not, I'm not speaking for this or even recommending it, but if you as a commission wanted to proceed down that path. I'd wait for another supplement where we can explore what that looks like. Um, in terms of a small shop or what its needs would be, I think it's just more complicated than you'd probably wanna get into here. Um, because you probably wanna talk about. What is it, other than just the use? Is it a certain building type? Is it no more than X square footage, is it? Um, which is, you probably, I would recommend you don't wanna hold up the other things you're trying to do now to figure that out.
Did you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, uh, living, living in Lake Shore four, I, I don't feel the need to have a coffee shop on Lake Shore three or Lake Shore four. If I wanna grab a coffee, I'll go to Lake Shore one or Lake Shore two, I, I don't, we don't need to. Commercialize Lake Shore three and Lake Shore four, we've got Lake Shore one and Lake Shore two for that, that's my comment.
Thank you.
I'm along the same lines at traffic as well and making people stop there and crossing across that road that's already busy if you're coming from the other direction. And you throw in, you've got a Jiffy Mark, the Pickle Perch, the breakfast place at the Lake Shore Pioneer Inn, the guilty plate just reopened, or is it in the process of reopening?
Gotta go to Rosy's.
What's that?
Rosy's.
And Rosy's.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing no changes from the majority.
Yeah.
For this one, right?
The majority is.
And I won't speak for you. Just wanna reflect what I've heard.
Yeah. I always get another bug.
For now.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Anything else on the table of uses?
So we have, go back to the beginning. We have in there for multifamily dwellings, they seek to pose residential buildings.
Yes. So. This is a. So what we talked about is mul-, again, multifamily is, as it's, it currently exists in the regulations. Multifamily is. Anything greater than two units. Um, this would allow you, this creates a new menu for you, and I keep going back to menus. Where you can say, boy, I really don't want a twelve-unit multifamily or a sixty-unit multifamily, but I'm totally cool with a five-unit townhouse. Um, so this creates just more categories than just multifamily. Cause it's a big jump from three to sixty. Um, so this gives you a few more tiers. I don't claim that this is fully developed, there's a lot more we can do with this. I think that it's a very basic start for things you might choose. To be allowed that exist in the world between two and sixty units. We could either further develop it now if you're interested or further develop it in other districts at another time. Rich and I talked a little bit about, you know, is it appropriate to have these like twelve-unit apartment buildings on like Middle Road? It's kinda different out there. Um, and is there something? That would allow you to have something in between where you're like, boy, you know, these, these townhomes that exist are, are a different feel than a, a big sixteen-unit box, so. This is a, a first look at something like this. I know it's your first look.
So are you saying multiplex small, um, three to four units?
Yes, sorry, that's cut off a little up there.
And. That would be what's allowed on one piece of property, no matter how big or small.
It would still have to comply, all of these would have to comply with the density.
Yes.
It's just how you allocate those four units. So, um, there are actually quite a few already existing on East Lake Shore on the non-lakeside. Um, a shore, I'm gonna get it wrong, Sandy Shore Terrace.
Sandy Shore?
I'm saying it right. Uh, there's a, there's a fourplex there. Um, I probably don't even know it.
The brown building, is that what you're?
I think it's blue. It doesn't face the road, it sort of sits perpendicular to it.
And it's four units?
Four units, they're set up two over two. Um, it's really not much bigger than some of the houses that are there, but there's four, these are apartments, this particular one. Um.
I guess there are some larger properties.
The idea is we don't want this big box, right?
Right, but on these bigger pieces of property, you could probably see a development where you could have. Let's say, I'm gonna say duplexes out there scattered on the property, you know, and it would look like individual homes around it, but there are duplexes. But that would be multiple units on the same property, does that kick you into a multi, a large multiplex even though they're little?
No, this is all about what the, the, the structure is.
The individual structure.
It's the individual structure.
Yeah, what's there in it?
Yeah.
So you could have two small multiplexes or you could have five.
Yeah.
Get on the property.
And further down the road, you know, with more, um, consideration, you might say, boy, especially on big properties, not necessarily East Lake Shore. You might say, we're tired of fifty duplexes existing in a subdivision, let's look for some variety. You can't have more than fifty percent of any given type. So this is something you could build on in the future, it's got limited applicability, I think, for East Lake Shore. But starting to have these types allows, I think, a, a lot of flexibility going forward in other districts and other considerations. For here, what I think it does is say. You can have more than a duplex on these large lots, but it's not gonna be. This, um, sixteen-unit box. Um, cause you did say that you liked that, sort of there's a condo development of townhouses and you guys liked that. So, but if you just, right now, that is a multifamily. And if you allow that, you would also have to allow the sixteen-unit box.
One of the things about the whole sewer around the bay was people were concerned about things like this and how many structures are gonna pop up all of a sudden and. Because now there's sewage available to these folks.
So this wouldn't change the density, to be clear, your lot, if you have a ten-acre lot and it's roughly three units. Per acre in, in the, um, on the non-lakeside there in, in what would be L S four, so you've got a ten-acre lot that's thirty units. It's thirty units, it's thirty units, it's thirty units, you're deciding whether those thirty units have to all be single families. Whether those thirty units could be, um, three rows of ten. Whether those thirty units are fifteen duplexes, but it's still only thirty, at the end of the day, it's thirty. And that's an extreme example, just so nobody gets worried about all these thirty units popping up. Um, I don't think there's a lot of properties, um, but there are some that are bigger than you think, um.
Could it be mixed, I mean, could it be multiple, like three and six and?
So it could be.
Mm-hmm.
You know, eventually you might wanna mandate something like that or not, but it could, it's whatever, as drafted here, it's whatever somebody proposes. Um, but it couldn't be something that's not on this list, so it couldn't be this multi, multiplex median five to twelve units, for example. Would not be allowed here. Does that make sense?
So what we're looking at, so we're clear for supplement forty-four.
For supplement forty-four.
We will have to approve this to put into supplement forty-four, to put into L S four, right?
Yeah, it, I.
So it's all, it's all going to go.
It's not gonna look like this in its formatting yet.
We're going to have to make sure that's part of the deal.
Yes, if you don't, if you choose not to pursue this, you'll have to decide multifamily or not.
Yeah.
In L S four.
Right.
If you choose not, it means you don't get those townhomes that exist, that the, the ones that you, you have showed favor for. If you choose yes, it means you, who knows what you get.
Yeah.
So right now, LS four is always, it's part of our one.
It is our two.
Our two.
Yeah. Where multifamily is allowed.
That's where it's going.
Yeah.
And we don't want the big box. We all, we're all shaking.
So this is a way to kind of control that, but still allow multifamily.
Yep.
So this is a new table?
This is, this concept is brand new. I don't know that it ends up looking like this because you have to fit it into. I still have to play around with how it fits into the existing structure for table A one and A two.
Yeah, this will have its own two point five.
Cause some of this, just to be clear, does apply. You know, there's no changes to other districts, so right now, other residential districts, even your low density ones, your, your R tens. Already allow, I shouldn't say there's no changes, that's not true. According to this sheet, um. A small mod- multiplex couldn't exist in the R ten. So I guess there's, there's more to consider here than just that. R ten being sort of your ag zoning, large, large lot. Ten acre zoning.
Yeah. I mean, this definitely work. There's no doubt, we, this will definitely get us where we.
So what I'm hoping you'll weigh in on is, is less about the formatting and just the concept.
Right.
The definitions, what it means, the number of units. Um, this is sort of new, so you might want to spend a little bit more time figuring out districts. Um, I tried to match what is currently in there so that this wasn't a huge change. Other than the, the LS, the new LS four. Where again, right now, you could have multifamily of any size, as long as the density permits it.
So, but for us. Um, I get the definitions part, but for, if, you don't have to change anything for all the other districts. Cause you'll just blank out what gets blanked out, but you can leave what's already there. If you want to put the multiplex large in GD three, i- it's just permitted, just like now. Right? So you don't have to make any changes, even though we do this.
Maybe I just don't include it at all right now, cause I don't want to confuse, I'm not trying to dig into the other districts.
Right. Now, that's my point.
The next supplement, I'm trying not to as much as possible.
That's my point, is this, can you put it in there and?
Yeah.
Just make sure the other districts stay the same.
So I do need to work on, I guess is what I'm saying, I acknowledge that it's not perfect.
Yeah.
But it adjusts effect.
Yes.
Three, now it's four.
So I want to make sure it's not, but I want the idea to be understood that all residential districts, and I think right now, all residential districts can have a duplex. All residential districts. Can have. Actually, so LS one wouldn't allow a townhouse, so that's something to think about. I don't think they could exist there anyway.
No.
There's no land. Um, and they, their, multifamily's not allowed in LS three anyway, so that's why it's not included there. Or I mean LS one.
LS one.
You can't have multifamily in LS one right now.
Right. So how do we get just, so basically, multiplex large and LS four? If we do anything, we have to just not permit it. We have, we have, we have the multi, no, we don't, yeah, again, we're back to the.
Yeah.
Three versus sixty.
So. I'm going to work on how to fit it in to reflect what you're trying to say.
Okay.
Um, it's not, yeah, what you don't say can often mean as much as what you do say, so I'm trying to be careful about not having a blank next to multiplex large.
Yeah.
Um, so maybe they get deleted, I put them in here just to show you where it can go, to show you what can come in a future supplement.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm trying to make sure that we're really only impacting. Policy wise, LS three and LS four. But if it reflects what's already allowed in other districts, that's okay, cause it, you're not changing your policy, it's just how we're stating it.
So the way you've got it written, it also includes our two or three, LS two and all two D districts.
Yes. So I.
That's in keeping with what?
I'm pretty sure, but this is, my intention will be to confirm all of that. I don't want to make any changes to what exists. There might be appropriate ones, but I don't think we want to tackle them right now.
Yeah.
So I will, um. Check these against. Current zoning, I think what I'm hearing is you agree that you don't want to make any changes to allowances. Um, but as far as, um, LS four in particular. How do you feel about? Townhouses, multiplex, duplex? Being the right types?
Yeah, right? We're good with the, just, we don't want big box.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of energy use, just thinking, I don't want a big box, but I'm just trying to think, is it more energy use? You know, is there more energy used? By different structures?
By different structures. If they're built properly, no, right?
No, right, okay. And they do have to meet the resident's right energy.
Yeah.
Right, right, so that probably would.
Yeah.
Consideration.
So any new construction will have to meet those codes.
Yeah.
And anything subject to Act two fifty, you'll have to even meet more.
Yeah.
With the stretch code.
I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
And what about those, um, so what, really what's listed here for LS one is that you would not, you allow single families and duplexes. This would not allow townhouses or multiplexes on LS one.
No duplex.
Or LS three, I'm sorry.
Right.
Does that sound in line with what you would like to see?
Yes.
Okay. No, so basically, no more than two units in a building on LS three. Um, you know, do I see big boxes coming? No, do I see somebody creating one floor living, a triplex? Yes.
Absolutely.
So just to be clear, and on the record, you would not want that.
That's right. Right?
Cause I could see studio over studio over studio.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just, I just want to.
That was the character of the bar.
I just want to highlight all the implications.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to make it a leading statement, I just.
Yeah, and one designer, the other doesn't increase traffic, it's thirty units.
Yeah.
Whether it's thirty units.
So that, that probably would be a change over what's allowed today. If you had a lot large enough to fit three units, there's not a lot of them.
Mm-hmm.
But if you did, you could have stacked. Um, you could have a stack of studios or something, or one bedrooms. But no, okay, that's what I'm hearing, okay. For LS three.
How can you have those in town, go out?
I am hearing that there are some on East Lake Shore. I don't know if they're legal or not.
They're stacked.
But I get calls.
I don't know.
On the lake side, that there's apartment over apartment over apartment. And actually, I think there is one that's legal. I don't know anyone. I think it's a, it's a, there's rentals, year round rentals though. It's apartment, apartment, apartment. Yeah, there's a basement unit. Yeah. They're not three stories up the road, there's a basement unit and then two above it. Okay?
Yep.
Um, that's all I have for Lake Shore stuff.
All right. All good with that?
Mm-hmm.
All good? All good? All right. Move it on.
Okay. Bear with me.
Thank you again.
Okay, I know the list looks really long, I promise you that many of them are very technical fixes. They're like, hey, we missed a word, or we. Some of them do our policy, so I will make sure to highlight which ones are which. Um, and I did reorder them to try to put them in order, so we can just go down.
Are we back at the very beginning?
We are up to B, for B.
What page is that on?
Yeah, right at the beginning.
Right at the beginning.
So these are throughout, I did highlight this for you last time, this is just a reorganization. So every single district had a paragraph for municipal plan, permitted uses, conditional uses, relationship. Where it said the same thing fifty-four times, I deleted them, put it in once at the beginning of the document. Hopefully, we can save five or six pages that way. That's really all that B is. Okay?
Yeah.
Um, where something was specific to that district, I did not delete it, I left it. So at like, uh, there's a couple districts, there's additional standards for GD four, I left all those in GD four. Okay, look, we're up to C. Um, updates to the process for zone change requests. Guys, I got to tell you, when we did this, um. Policy in February of like, how do you come back in for a request, I had no idea it existed in here. So you guys adopted a policy, totally my fault, that was contradictory to what's in the regulations. I don't know why a policy existed in the regulations. It did. So I deleted all that, that is in two oh three D, let me show you. And just referenced your document.
Two oh one. Two oh three.
Zone change requests, so this said, it was this whole thing about a written request and there's a public notice and defer and. It's contradictory to the policy that you had adopted, so. Delete, delete. I don't want to move on until you give me a thumbs up.
I was trying to.
You can take your time.
Trying to, if you could just give us the page and the article where we are, every time we, we change.
Yep, two oh three D. Um, your page. Two, article two, page four.
Thank you.
Now, there may be some of this that's worth pulling back, I'm not going to like, delete it from all history. That's worth pulling back into your consideration of a zoning change request, policy. But. It's odd to have your own policy exist in the regulatory document. I think you should just have it as a separate policy and reference it.
Yeah, that's why we did it, basically, when you started, so.
So.
I think you're good with taking it out.
And this says you can only hear, you're only supposed to hear a request to change your zoning within six months or something of adoption of a town plan.
Yeah.
I don't think that's what you wanted.
Don't we have like four zoning requests, change of zoning requests on hold?
Probably, you had a few you kicked to the fall.
Yep.
Right.
We'll pick up back.
Yeah.
So that, does that have anything to do with this?
No, I didn't know this existed, to be honest with you at that time.
It feels like we separated planning commission from DRV days. That's what I think.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate.
Yeah.
To pull this out.
Yeah, they were all intertwined at one time.
Yeah. There's not necessarily bad criteria in here for consideration, but. Just have it exist in its own document.
Good.
Okay.
Yep.
Um. D, so accessory structures. It is really. When members of the public come in, most people do not know what zoning district they live in. Accessory structures exists in our table of, our dimensional table as its own column, several columns actually. It's. Been fully dependent on what zoning district you live in. Now, we know that even within a single zoning district, every lot can be very different. Um. And the accessory structure dimensions, having tied them to a zoning district. We're creating some real inequalities. Um, that. Are better tied to what your lot situation is, as opposed to your zoning district. So, for example, to say that an ag, ag's not a good example, but. An R three can look very different if it's a fifty acre lot than if it's a half acre lot. Um, but this would give you that forty foot accessory structure regardless, as it exists today. Plus, it had all of these columns, and so when members of the public came in just for a shed. They, I think we're, we're expressing feeling really overwhelming, cause they're in another district, it's easier for them to just know, can I have a shed or not? And how tall? So, a lot of this is consolidation of those. Columns in the table, in the dimensional standards table. I tried to keep them to match what was in there, whether I thought they were appropriate or not, I tried to match them to what was already in there. What I did include that's new.
What issue you want?
I'm just scrolling through, I'm not on there yet. Uh, two point oh six. I'll give you a page in a moment.
Thank you.
As soon as I get there.
Page ten.
Thanks, Bob.
In article two?
Yes. Uh, so minor words along the way, I'm not going to point out everyone. Cannot, cannot. Okay. Um. Height was just a movement, it's nothing new, sorry. Um, highest points of the structure shall be measured from average pre-construction grade, that's not new text, it was just moved, so it shows up as new. Bob, did you say page ten?
That was two oh six. Hmm. Two oh six.
Okay.
Two oh nine.
Two oh nine. I'll get that cleaned up.
Page twelve.
Uh, page twelve. So we've added in sort of a purpose statement for accessory structures. Um. That's something that's come up a lot, like what makes, you know, makes, can I have an accessory structure with nothing else? No, it's not accessory at that point. Um, but comes back, question comes in a lot. Um. There was also a lot of cleanup, you guys made changes to this as part of supplement forty-three. That is confusing people, including all three of my zoning administrators. Um, because of the way it, it was written, I think it was meant to clean up something else, I don't know all the history. I've run this by every person in my, my department who will implement it. The idea is the same, the language is just a little bit different in how it's spelled out. Um, this is about exceeding the fifty percent. So that was in there, but it's just. Written differently. Um. Rather than spell out in the chart, twenty feet for accessory structures in most of the districts, this says you're twenty feet and less. Um, there's a difference between a flat accessory structure. And a pitched one, those were already in those charts. Um. What's new here? That I think was intended by saying more rural districts can have a taller one. This instead says a parcel that's larger. You still have to make, I'm sorry, B. These are the one-twos and threes. So the number matches what was in the chart already. What has changed is, how do you get bigger than that? How do you get bigger than twenty-five feet for an accessory structure? Now, keep in mind, accessory structure includes everything from sheds to detached garages. These are taller in my finding than other communities, but I did not make a change to that, I wanted to stay true to what was in there.
Or like in law apartments, accessory structure?
In some cases, most often they're actually included in the primary structure, we see more of them in than detached. There are a lot that are detached.
Right, because a lot of people now are coming.
But the majority that we see are within the principal structure.
I have a case where the mother and father have adult children now, they went and moved to the main house, and the mother and father want to stay on the property because they want accessory structure, they want to be separate.
Yep.
Be close, but not in the same building. That's coming up.
We're, we're seeing more, for sure, I think.
So this accessory structure, that would fall under the.
If they were detached, yeah. But it doesn't apply just to an accessory dwelling unit, because that can exist.
I know, but I just don't think you're, you're talking about heights.
The height, yeah. So again, this wasn't meant to, to, to change what was in that chart, it was meant to capture, where do you get more than the standard? So the standard of twenty-five feet for most, how do you get more than that? You get more than that. So you think about a shed, or, you know, here's an example I, I've been sharing, like a pool house. I recently visited a property for an inspection. It was a large lot, six acres, kinda sat back from everybody else, there was nothing else around, this enormous pool house. It was beautiful and it looked really appropriate on that site, it didn't stand out. It was probably almost thirty feet tall. That same pool house on a quarter acre lot on a single family ranch, looks enormous. And has nothing to do with the district, I think it has everything to do with the lot and its size. So that's what I'm trying to, to reflect here. Which I think was the intention by going by district, by saying something like an R ten, a ten acre lot, ten acre zoning. What we're finding though, again, is that the zoning district doesn't really match up and you can't stereotype them in the way that you think you can. Um, somebody brought up to me the other day that Marble Island, most of Marble Island, you would think would be something similar to like an R two, and it's something like an R ten. Which, I'm not trying to rezone here, but it's not ten acre zoning. And it would allow, even on a small Marble Island lot, that forty foot accessory structure. So, I think this is just an attempt to say that it's more about your size and your distance than it is about your zoning district.
Don't you have to put some criteria in so you're consistent?
Yep, so they're still in there, so it still says you have to be three acres or more. Um, you can't just stick it up by the road, it has to be to the side or the rear, if you're going with something extra large. Um, it has to be fifty feet from all property lines. So if you were going with this forty foot accessory garage, shed, pool house, you can't just stick it right on your neighbor's property line, no matter how large your lot is.
And then if you want to add a bedroom, that would kick in the septic, the wastewater permit.
If it's an apartment. Well, actually, any additional bedroom, but yeah. I did try to make an exception for barns and agricultural buildings, where it wouldn't matter the size of your lot. Um, I don't know, it's probably redundant with state law, it probably doesn't need to be in there. But, I just wanted to make it clear. E.
Up to forty feet.
Yep. Right, there is a limit, yeah, but it's one of the tallest ones that's allowed. Without being on a large lot.
So where is that?
So this is three, two point oh nine, so it is page. Yep, I had it wrong in the, well, I don't know, two point oh nine. Article two, page thirteen. Thoughts? Thumbs up for now, move on?
I'm good, good, yep. All good.
E, very, very simple, we had very inconsistent language, we said accessory apartment, we said accessory dwelling unit, we said accessory house, we said a bunch of things. State statute uses accessory dwelling unit, A D U. I tried to just change all those. Um, that is Article two, page fourteen. Onto fifteen. So it's just all about consistency there, no substantive changes. Okay, you guys are good, I'm gonna move on.
So when you do this, do you change it and put new definitions as well?
I think, yes, I think I listed definition on this one, right? And definition's twelve point oh two, yep. So it was change in the definition.
Let me take two seconds. You folks that are sitting here, we're done discussing LS three and four, right? This is all just homework for cleaning things up, if you don't wanna sit through the homework part of this and just fixing definitions and stuff.
The items further down the list, I'm interested.
Okay, just wanted to, just wanted to make sure.
Do you wanna jump around at all, or are you?
Nope, continue on.
Okay.
Yep, I'm done now.
Um, so there is the addition, wastewater permits shall be obtained prior to a zoning permit. That's been our practice, we were surprised to find it wasn't actually listed here. So we're just saying you have to get a wastewater permit if you want accessory dwelling unit.
If you want a what?
An accessory dwelling unit.
And you wanna add a bedroom, right, I mean, if it's just a pool house without any facilities, it's fine.
Does that? Um, if you already have a septic that's set up for that, that's not, that's a no brainer, right? Say you have a three bedroom house, for some reason you have a four bedroom septic.
Yes, you still have to get the permit, it might just be that it's no problem getting the permit.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, because the question comes up, people will transfer bedrooms, they may have a four bedroom house, and they're like, oh, we're gonna turn one of these into a storage space and build the apartment above the garage, so that comes up. You still have to get a permit, it's just easy and there's no cost.
Okay. Perfect.
Um, fences, this is new, two point ten B. I'll give you a page in a moment.
I'll be page seventeen.
Yes. So, um, quick, quick history on this one. If you have a fence above six feet, you have to go to the DRB. Fences, if you've ever tried to buy one, generally come four, six, eight foot heights. A lot of people get six foot fences, I think ninety percent of our fence applications are for six foot fences. We had a gentleman, nice gentleman came in, was extremely honest in his application, had a six foot fence panel, and the post was two inches taller, because they mostly are, some inches taller. And if anyone were to implement this by the book, we would have to deny that. The fence is six feet tall, the posts every eight feet are two inches taller. I don't wanna have to not implement the regulations, and I sure as heck don't wanna implement them, so I tried to just fix it here. Um, so I just tried to put something in about how we're measuring. I, this gentleman in particular also said, I don't wanna put it at the ground, I wanna raise it up an inch so I can weed whack and it doesn't get dirty and cool, that's what most people are doing. So, but then again, his fence became six foot three instead of six feet. Technically, I can't put my signature on it.
You move from the ground to the tallest part.
Yes. So this is just to try to clean up common sense, I think it's common sense, I'll leave it to you to disagree with me.
No, I like it. I'm sorry. I just, um, well, specifically in LS one, two, three, or four, is there any way to say the fence has to be so you can see through it, so it can't block the view of the lake? I mean, and that's just a thought, you know, but again, getting back to people, I mean, I just have seen communities, not in Vermont, but you can't see any of the water, you know, you drive for miles and there's just fences.
Yeah, um, if that's something you wanna explore, I would say either you'll have to give me some time or include it in your next supplement. Um, I think it would be more complicated than you think in how we write it.
A lot of people put fences up for privacy, if you can see through it, you can use the privacy.
Yeah.
I just don't know how I would write.
It's not impossible to write, but it's trickier than you think, because you have to talk about where the fence is, front yard, side yard, does it, it's just, it would take a little bit.
Just in terms, I mean, it wouldn't be any.
No, it wouldn't be a quick fix.
Just in terms of, again, trying to preserve views for people. I don't know if it would just be in LS three, you know, along West Lake Shore Drive, that we would do that, but again, just, I, I have seen, you know, miles and miles of fences where people can't see the ocean, they can't see the water. You know, they've denied access kind of to the view, so it's always a balancing act.
So I could save it as a discussion point for the next supplement, I would say, if you were to take it up as part of this supplement, remember every week and every day that you delay actually adopting this. I get the application in for the three parking spaces in the forty foot building, I have an application right now for a forty foot rebuild. It's in.
I get it.
And there will, so, we might have to just have good enough for now. If.
We'll talk about fences later.
So let's go back to that, this one I just, I was, it was quick, I didn't think it was a big deal. Are you guys okay with this one? Okay. So it does give them a little space off the ground, a little space for caps. Okay. Good, see, I told you, some of these are quick. Um, non-conforming uses, this is policy. Uh, let me get to the page.
Page eighteen.
Bob, you're good. Yep, so right now, um, says if you discontinue a use for six months, it's done, kaput. This says you might be able to extend to twelve. Um, if it's actively marketed and stuff, I think COVID has changed a lot of thinking, the real estate market is wacky especially for non-residential uses. I don't pretend that this is an easy one, or that I, it's a no brainer, this is policy. I don't take any offense if you think six months is plenty. Um, so again, if you have a use right now that's non-conforming, I'm gonna just raise the, um, Porter's Point Store. I don't, is there a name, I don't know, the store on Porter's Point Road, is it non-conforming use, Brennan's or, you know, whatever it's, the Apple Deli.
Yep.
Whatever it was, six months after that stops, it can't be a store ever again, it is a residential neighborhood, residential house. Six months, when you're trying to market something like that, right now is very challenging. This would allow them up to twelve months, if they're actively marketing and it's not just a blighted vacant site. Again.
Makes sense.
I appreciate that this is a policy change, and I don't pretend that this is.
How long has that starved and vacant, just out of curiosity, would this apply to them?
Um, so, they have demonstrated use periodically. It would apply to them, they are not considered, they've not exceeded their six months. They are currently allowed their shop use, is what I can tell you.
To keep within the.
But they have, within every six months, had to do something to demonstrate its use.
Correct.
Would this preclude somebody who has something on a fence they're not sure about, so once a month they rent it out to somebody as a business and have a business in it for a month? And can do this month after month after month after month, or is every six month policy to continue this forever?
So they can already do that.
So then if they can already do that, why do we have to expand it to a year? Why not, they've got six months, put something in there for a month if you need to, to continue?
I think it's for the people who aren't trying to skirt it, who are actively trying to market something.
Yeah, if you, if you honestly wanna get rid of your thing, your property, you walk away, and it takes you a year to get rid of it, you don't wanna play any games.
I'm not attached to this, just to be clear.
I'm just asking, throwing things out there, because if you leave somebody a loophole, sometimes it gets taken advantage of.
Yeah, and I agree, and that's what's going on to get through the six months. So if we go to twelve, gives them some leeway without having to play games. I hope.
And it's perfectly okay as the decision-making body to not be okay with this one.
So is COVID the reason why, uh, six months is not enough time now, or is it, is that like in any world, it would be twelve months?
It's partial, I think it's, it's about the not, residential, right now, right, is booming. Everything else is not. Um, and so, it's just, it's the market. Um, from what I understand, I'm not a Realtor. Um,
And you think twelve months is more fair to a business owner?
I think if it's not abandoned, that's, you don't want something to sit abandoned, hold on to that use forever. Do I feel strongly about it? Absolutely not. It's, it's something that was, that's been talked about on more than one property. Um, and it's been in draft form since even before I got here. So I wanted to include it, but if you say, we just don't know, or save it for later, or no, it will not.
So what happens? What happens after twelve months? And the building sits there, they can't market it as a commercial piece of property anymore. It's still, what happens, it just still sits there?
Yeah.
So the extra six months gives them a little bit more time to market it and sell the property and get it used again. Basically what we're trying to do.
Yes. We don't see a ton of it, I mean, most stuff is conforming in use, again, this is only use, not, not the dimensional structure of conformity?
No, I'm just trying to think, if it's non-conforming use, it doesn't sell in dwellings, it's gonna sit there falling apart. Until someone can market it as he's a property that can be made into a residential.
Yeah, in this example, I think it was also a concern, from what I understand, for West Lake Shore, there are some uses that some people had said, boy, this is not really kind of what we want, new stuff being built does, but we're okay with the, you know, Bob's Repair Shop, I don't know if that even exists. We don't want a new repair shop or a new gas station, but we're totally cool with the one that's there. If that were to stop, it could not be reborn.
Yeah, and there's some old school properties that would be shamed, Clover House is already gone. The Clover House, that must be already gone.
Oh, was that a non-conforming?
It was, that's, that must be way done now.
So the place that used to be a florist shop on West Lake Shore Drive, that could never be a florist, could never be a business again, or?
That's in LS.
What, a commercial?
Yeah, that's in LS two. So she, that, that property's okay. Clover House was sitting there. Clover House was sitting there.
This is just residential and not...
Yeah, so this is anything where that use is no longer allowed.
It could be the opposite. It could be residential and not commercial zones.
Yes, the same. And a few of those exist, I think.
I don't know, this stays in time, so twelve months goes by pretty quickly. Sell a commercial property, you know?
Six months is just, sometimes it's barely enough time to get a for-sale sign out.
I'll roll with the block. I'm easy.
There you go. It's easy.
So, you're unanimously okay there? Okay. Reading loss, tiny little print. Uh, H is extremely simple, two point fifteen. Bob, do you have the page?
I didn't get to H, unfortunately.
Well, twenty-two.
Twenty-one it starts on. Have you done about the pot of the water supply? It's a little change.
Yeah, well, septic, right?
Yeah, so this is just, again, I sat down with our wastewater official and we realized just how few tie-ins there are with the expectations for wastewater. So this is really just trying to clean that all up, straighten that up, tie in what is expected for wastewater into the development regulations. The problem is if they exist only in the ordinances, only the wastewater official can require them. So if it says, for example, you need a permit to get a septic tank, great. You need a permit from the wastewater official to get a septic tank. You don't put it in here, we can't require that you have that permit to build a new house. So this is just trying to connect those activities that take place, either through DRB or other permitting, to some common sense wastewater permitting needs. And that's what is H there. It's just connecting it to Chapter Eight. There was no connection to Chapter Eight previously. Chapter Eight is the chapter of the Code of Ordinances that talks about septic. There's nothing here that is substantively different than is required in Chapter Eight. We're just linking it to these requirements.
So if someone, a family sells their home to a family member, transfers that property, do they still have to go through this? Do the, does your septic, see, I would like to figure a way that that septic, whoever got transferred, would have to be inspected?
That is a state wastewater regulation that I'm not touching.
That's a rough one.
Respectfully. So we follow, so we have delegation here, but we follow the state wastewater rules. So they determine them. Again, what this is, is just putting what's already existing in clear language.
I just tried to pass legislation for that. I thought I'd give it a shot. It didn't go anywhere with the state law.
I update reference to Building Code. We called it the Building and, the Building Code. It has a new name. It's now the Building Code and Building Safety Ordinance. That's page twenty-three. Nothing earth-shattering, but I'm trying to be thorough in listing everything that's been changed. Another not earth-shattering one. J, there was a discrepancy in Chapter Four. Sorry. I have to scroll here. Let me get to Chapter Four. So the heading of Chapter Four... Heading of Chapter Four went GD one, GD two, GD three, GD four. That's great. Then you get into the text. It goes GD one, GD two, Severance Corners. So it's just... GD three is the Severance Corners Formas Code District. So it's just, just clarity. Nothing substantive. Just listing it here to be thorough. K seven oh four C, ooh, we get to really scroll, hang on. I'll get you a page in a moment.
Are you on K?
Yes. You got it for me?
Looks like thirty.
Page thirty?
Talking about signs?
No, Water Protection District. Seven oh four C.
Oh, here we go. Page seven, Article seven, page seven.
Article seven?
Yes. So this again, just pulling things in line, having sat down with our wastewater and stormwater experts. This is just stuff that they've been looking for for a while. Um, says that, you know, so state stormwater rules allow for exemption of stormwater management systems within a stream buffer. Now it's clear. Nothing substantive. Thumbs up? Okay. Uh, vehicle charging stations. Woo, okay. Substance. Uh, that is ten point oh one. This is the first of three that were remanded from Supplement Forty-three.
When you get to it, can you blow it up? 'Cause like, I can't read it that small.
Yeah, it just scrolls faster when it's small. Without a mouse, a little awkward.
I think it's Article ten, page four.
My footer's changed, which made it hard.
Yeah, I did too, but it is, it does change that, Article ten, page four.
It does?
It does. That's clearly out too.
I'll fix that. Article ten, page four. Okay. Substance, substance, substance. Okay, so there's a few things. This one is a little bit different in terms of how it is shown here because I wanted to show you a markup of the current regulations and a markup of your previous markup. So. History, you guys know better than I do. From what I understand, there was language that the Planning Commission included for electric vehicle charging as part of the last supplement. That went to the Select Board who said, "Why is this here?" Nobody quite knew. So the Select Board says, "We're gonna kick it out of this supplement. You guys talk about it." Am I, am I doing okay, Pam? You guys talk about it, figure out if you really want it there and bring it back to us. So. Electric vehicle charging stations. I think part of the reason that it also got kicked out was Act Two fifty. So typical residential building standards, energy standards, do not include stipulations for electric vehicle charging. However, if you are subject to Act Two fifty, you are subject to the stretch code, which has a requirement for electric vehicle charging stations. So originally I said, "Well, fine, Act Two fifty's gonna take care of this for the same thresholds that was included. It doesn't need to be in here." And then I realized that Severance Corners is part of the growth center, which is exempt from Act Two fifty review. So if you want this in there, in most places, it'll be governed by Act Two fifty standards for any property that's subject to it, except in your growth center, which is probably the one place, if you're gonna have it anywhere, probably the place you want it. So. Back to the red line, red line. Your full draft is the seven, eight, nine. That was the draft as part of Supplement Forty-three that you sent to the commission. What I am recommending here to bring it more in line with the stretch code and to simplify it is to still require the charging stations for residential properties of ten units or more, one per four percent of spaces. The piece about having them convenient to the main entrance, I removed. I can tell you, as somebody who drives one, just to be clear, you don't want them in the most convenient spaces. Um, and most places don't want to wire them in the most convenient places because they will be parked in by other vehicles. They will not be reserved. If you put them in the prime spot, you'll almost always find a Toyota Tacoma parked in one. Have one of those too, so I'm not picking on most people. So that is a professional recommendation to remove the location element if you do want to include them. I would not force them to be in those prime spots. They could still be there if somebody wants to put them there, but I would not force them to be there. This, I also deleted this language, "If only electric vehicles may occupy charging spaces." That's an enforcement issue. That's a weird thing to put in a regulation. It's not a designed site plan element.
I much prefer the way it's written now than previous.
So residential only.
Okay, so back to Severance Corners then. If it's not just residential, there are also commercial buildings in there? Isn't commercial buildings do not have to provide?
Yeah, it's a good question. So it's still, I guess you could say multifamily or mixed projects with ten units of residential or more. I think that the idea, and if you read a lot of studies, I do read a lot of these studies. I sort of keep up on these. Most people with... You, you include multifamily because these are the people of the hardest, they're not having garages. They're not having a private space. Most vehicle charging is done overnight, especially if you have just a level two charger or even level one. Most people are not at businesses long enough to successfully get a charge. Again, I drive one. I don't plug in at Hannaford. It's not worth it to me. Um, I don't plug in here either. And most charging is done per the studies at, at, at a place that you live. Again, I'm not tied to this. If you'd like to, to bring it back, I'm just making a, a recommendation that falls in line with the stretch code. The stretch code speaks only to the residential component. Yes. The, uh... Section A dash four. Multifamily developments, ten units or more. They don't include commercial.
There's no charging stations at commercial?
Not that there isn't. It's just not required as part of this particular code. You're welcome to require anything you'd like. I was just trying to be consistent.
I'm just curious, who pays? I was, when I was reading this, I, and I should know this, but who pays for the electricity?
Um, I've seen different models. Some places will offer free charging and some places will require you to use a system like PlugShare. Or, uh, there's a couple different systems.
So you're either charged or you have to pay?
Or Tesla has its own. Yeah, free ones are harder and harder to find. Most places you have to pay.
Free one that I know about was in St. Albans Parking Garage. You have to pay for the parking spot.
City Markets was free for a long time. Is it not free anymore?
I don't know.
Sorry, I just put that out there. City Market's free. At least it may work.
The reason I'd like commercials is 'cause I'd like people to spend more time in stores, you know, and spend money in Colchester. I don't know if that equates to that, but that's why I would like it around restaurants or, you know, places where people could go shopping so that they, you know, they would, while they're waiting to charge, they're, they're not just sitting in their car.
Yeah. Well, this mandates level two charging, which is not the slowest, but it's not quick. You probably are only making up, on a standard level two charger, in an hour of shopping, ten to fifteen miles of charge. I do it anyway if I'm at City Market, 'cause it's free.
And that's...
Well, you pay for it there somewhere. You just don't see it.
That's true. I do, I do pay for it somewhere, but so do you.
Will those chargers?
The fast chargers are a different ballgame. Um, and most of those are Tesla chargers, but... 'Cause you can sit for twenty minutes at a, you know, at a rest stop, get a coffee, chill out, and you're good to go. You know, you've just about replenished most of what you need. Those are pretty rare and that's not what's specified here. I shouldn't say they're rare. Uh, they don't fit most electric vehicles.
So in the future, let's say ten, twenty years in the future, would they have to be replaced, the tractors? Or could they, does anybody know if they could just be upgraded to be a fast charger? Is it something?
They probably would have to be replaced. It's a different technology. It's a different plug.
I think we digress. I think we digress.
No, I'm just trying to think about a little ahead, you know, I mean, so we don't have to, if they could just be upgraded, it might be worth it.
Hey, someday you may have it in the road, so when you're driving down, it charges as you go. Can you see that scene?
That's Prius, right? That's Prius. That's, well, Prius, that's right.
So my goal here is to give you something back that was more than a baby step? Thoughts?
Thoughts on that one? Thoughts on that one? I don't have a lot of thoughts on that one myself, so.
Keep it, change it, delete it.
I think, myself, I'm, I'm of a different thought that if you're gonna build this, these big apartment buildings, the customer base is gonna drive these guys to put some chargers out there somewheres. If you have a commercial base, Tesla's gonna come in and rat a little piece of property and throw some down. So this is fine with me. Throw them somewheres, throw the residential's, let them roll.
All right, I heard from Rich. Anyone else?
Go ahead.
In the spirit of, let's get moving?
Yeah.
Not try to pressure you, but yes, keep it as red line, red line?
As it's been adjusted.
Red line squared?
All good for the Select Boards. We'll have to hear about it again.
Yeah, they'll change it.
I didn't care about as much then either as I do now.
Hands are easily squared by spiel.
Good, all right.
May, they may change it all completely, but at least, okay.
Onward.
Uh, onward. Us, oh, this is another common sense extension. M nine point oh four H. Oh, sorry, I got out of order there. Slap my hand. Nine oh four H. So this says... I dream of a time when our regulations, you can just go to the table of contents and click on them? Working on it. Nine oh four H. Yes, so this says your major subdivision elements expire after a year. Yes, so this says your major subdivision elements expire after a year. Anybody who's ever seen a major subdivision be built knows it doesn't, doesn't happen in a year?
No.
Imagine that.
So.
I think it's three years.
This is to extend that. Nine point oh-four H. There's the language, there it is. So, change it from one year to three. Is my recommendation. I think it's a very common sense approach. Your deck permit doesn't expire as fast as your whole subdivision permit, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I have any thoughts of that?
Yeah, bet.
Yeah, I just think it's reasonable. Somebody's building out a ten-lot subdivision in under a year.
We're all good, next.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, it's kind of mine of its own. Hopefully they'll all fix themselves once. I will check them as I accept all the changes eventually. Bicycle parking, another remand. Ten point oh-one K.
I think it's page nine or the bottom of eight. Bike racks shall be clearly visible to employees and visible where applicable and safe. They should be located in proximity to the main entrance of the building.
Okay, so. Almost okay. Almost there?
Nine.
Nine? So this one, I think, was also remanded because they're like, what is the point? So sorry, this is not a red line or a red line. There was a lot more to this. About having a plug-in space for the bike racks as well and having it... There was more language. I've slimmed that down. I think that what some of the feedback was is that having a plug-in for your bike racks was just unreasonable. It just seemed like a lot.
Why? I'm just curious.
I don't, I don't know, I wasn't there as part of them.
So there's not gonna be any charging for bikes?
Not required.
I got you on that one.
I think it should be required, I'm just...
I got, I have to admit on that one, which is crazy to me, is the whole world is changed with e-bikes. They're everywhere. And now we're gonna have people to drag them up their stairs and stick them in and plug them in, but we're gonna let them out their car. We're gonna force them to plug, and it's a little goofy. Which I'm good with the rack, I can tell you the truth, I don't care. They have to drag them up the stairs.
So I was just trying to, I understood, but I wasn't here.
Yeah, I get it.
That this was not one, that the select board was willing to move forward one, but wanted something.
Well, this is for parking areas, not just residential. It's a commercial.
All parking areas.
Parking areas, so it's really, when you're out there and about, it's not...
Right.
Yeah, so I'm gonna probably hit you guys in a future, this is a very short bike parking section.
Yeah.
I have a lot of big ideas that I didn't want to hit you with here, but that I think will be well appreciated. I'd like to return to this one in a future supplement. I think there's some good stuff being done with bike parking. I think Colchester's behind on it.
Oh, it's moving fast.
It was just more than I think we could put in here. But I'd like to, I haven't practically written.
I'm okay.
But I didn't want to hit you with it here.
Does it include charging?
The next supplement.
Part of it, and also part of it talks about what bike parking is. A big part, if you've ever tried to park your bike anywhere, is it says you have to have a rack. Have you ever tried to park your bike in one of those wave racks? You might as well not have one. You'll go places and people have them tied to lamp posts, because lamp posts are better than a lot of the racks, so... Just parking is also problematic, because we don't define what parking is. And people buy the cheapest racks, especially movable racks, that are there on day one and don't exist after day three. Right? So there's a lot of problems with bike parking that we can fix, that are cheap and easy for developers. Would that make the world of difference?
One simple thing, up until St. Albans, we moved it so it could be visible. And people started using it.
Yeah. It's amazing, if it's not in the back door where the kitchen staff hang out on their lunch breaks, yeah.
We moved it just simply, out of the shrubs.
And bolted, hopefully bolted.
Ideas on bike racks.
So I have a lot of things, I think for now, this is still something, but I fully acknowledge we could do more.
Right.
Is this good enough for now?
Yep.
Yeah? Okay to bring it back in the next supplement?
Sure.
Okay. Good, I got ideas. Commercial vehicle definitions, another one that was remanded, so these, this is a third of those three. Ten point oh-one M. Part of what happened here is that it was trying to make a fix for one particular problem and not really considering the bigger part of it. I have said, talked to people who know things about commercial vehicles. So this is highlighted, because I didn't think it was the right number. Length, I'm gonna change to sixteen feet. I'll do it right now. Oops. Wrong button. And a height of ten. That, from what I understand, is the standard size of your typical residential plumber. No C D L, no, we're not talking big box. We're talking, this is the guy who works at an electrical place and takes his truck home at night.
Usually have a raised rear end, so you can walk into it, that makes sense.
But it's not parking a tractor trailer or something that requires a C D L on a residential street.
I just wondered if it could be, if possible, if it could be screened from neighboring properties. I would, I'd be upset if I had to look at that.
Like just, just Joe the plumber coming home at night? Like?
This van.
Yeah.
I mean, if possible, I'm not making it a requirement.
Well, if you have limit to how high you can have a fence and the truck's ten foot tall, kind of gonna defeat the purpose then.
Anyone else wanna?
I get the, I get the screening thing, but honestly, I don't want it to go more effort than you have to. If he can park his vehicle in his driveway or next to his house, make use of it every day, I'm okay with it. I've been, I've had, been, I lived in Deloitte before, people that work there. They're respectful if they can. They're business people, they don't want to upset their neighbors either. At least the guys I was always dealt with. They'll do their best, and they might even build something on their own without us having to regulate.
I can tell you that, and I live in a pretty traditional neighborhood, there's at least two people who work for electrical, local electrical companies, two plumbers, one guy who does lawn care. Their vehicles don't look much different to me than the guy with the F-250 next on the other side. They're smaller than you think, I think, this size.
They're smaller than a local home. You know, the RVs.
Yes, that's true.
How about trailers, and if we're gonna talk vehicles, does this also step on the toes of people with trailers? Or is that a different?
No, so this is trying to define what a commercial vehicle is. So the other problem is, we talk about commercial vehicles a lot, but we don't define them. So that's the other part of this. So then the question come up, well, what about the guy who delivers for Domino's? Is that a commercial vehicle? What about the Uber driver? Is that a commercial vehicle? So this is trying to make clear what is and isn't, and very clearly saying that the Domino's guy is not a commercial vehicle. It doesn't matter that he uses it for a commercial purpose. Still a resident, it's still a passenger vehicle. But if you start to have these twenty-four-foot box trucks that you park at home every night, that starts to be a problem. So you're still allowed to have one. This was about more than one commercial vehicle. Again, I wasn't here for that original discussion, but I understand that a big part of it was, what is a commercial vehicle and what's the right size when we're talking about it?
I thought they were only allowed to have one.
Yes.
They can only have one?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So they could have one on one?
No.
Okay.
But this is also what is a commercial vehicle, what is, to make clear what you can and can't have.
So can I have a sixteen-foot truck in a thirty-foot trailer?
It's a combination, so no.
Just curious, because...
Now, again, this is something that is sort of a commercial vehicle, so... I don't think that, I don't know that you're hitting sixteen feet on a, on a standard passenger truck, are you?
Oh, yeah. A regular, regular pickup truck?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I mean, my pickup truck's sixteen feet, it's probably eighteen. But you're still taking basically, it's a pickup, it's a cabin chassis that...
But nobody's arguing that that's a commercial vehicle, so.
Yeah.
I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Essentially, I think, was really only a problem in one particular case. I don't think that it had a lot of drive outside of that request. Which I understand has sort of fixed itself.
Where did you find the, where you, the definition for sixteen feet? Because you're right, pickup trucks are kind of longer.
Oh, I didn't, I talked to somebody who owns a lot of trucks.
Yeah. The sixteen-foot would cover a base truck, which is sixteen to eighteen, I'd choose.
You think it should be?
How big are the egg trucks?
Those go a lot better.
I just follow the ones I've seen for construction. Can't picture whether it's like a large-sized length or thicker pedal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't pretend to be an expert, so I talk to other people.
Yeah. Sixteen would cover almost everybody.
Okay.
Eighteen feet might be a better one, because I know that eighteen feet is a standard parking spot. And you see these vehicles parking those spots, so you should, just a little bit beyond it.
Yeah, and you don't, yeah, you don't want like that U-Haul truck, right? Like, this is about Joe the plumber, Maria the electrician, right? Like, being able to bring their vehicle home at night. And not have that cow as a commercial vehicle.
So...
If you want to go to eighteen feet, it's no big deal. Couple more feet gives you the guy with a four-door.
If it's an standard parking spot.
That's a good reference point.
Yep.
Okay. We good with vehicles?
Yep.
Yeah, it's crossed out, I know it's hard to tell. I'm gonna format these later. I don't, I don't, it's like a... Thank you, yeah. I do see it. It is crossed out, but I'll clean it up. Photovoltaic systems. This is very simple, there's nothing substantive. What it's trying to do, this is ten point oh-eight.
Page twenty-seven.
Page twenty-seven?
Yep, on the bottom of it. Page one seventy-nine, two fifty.
What this is just trying to do is clarify, state law says if you're connected to the grid, we can't regulate you. So we had all these standards in here, but it wasn't clear what it was talking about actually regulating. What was the page called?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Thank you. It's also clarifying language. It formally said solar collectors for consistency and with state statute in chapter four. Change it to photovoltaic systems. This is making clear that even if you are connected to the grid, the town has the ability to regulate roof-mounted systems with respect to fire access. So, just making those clarifications. We do them all the time, they're super easy. And then this makes clear that these requirements only apply to those that are not net metered or connected. Because it wasn't clear, and people were like, why do I, you know, you're not allowed to do this. And they're right, we're not. If you don't connect, though, we have all the rights in the world. I did change it, I knew it's, it's had ten feet in height for a solar panel. That seemed really short, when you can have a shed that's forty. I'm recommending twenty feet. You'll almost never see these, everybody connects. But if you don't connect, you can have a twenty-foot panel instead of ten. Yes? Okay. Wind turbines. Had some weird language, sorry.
So, why is it you want to regulate the non-metered systems more than the metered ones? What's the, what's the rationale for that?
It's not about wanting, it's about state statute. State statute says you cannot regulate not metered.
Why do you want to regulate non-metered systems?
Presumably so that you have some boundaries in place. I didn't create it, it was in there. I'm just trying to make it taller.
I just, I don't like stuff that restricts people using renewable energy. Right, this will, this will give them more. This will add to it. Let's make it easier for them.
Like the ten feet, this is stripping.
Yeah. Yeah, we agree.
So the language is not new. The language was already in there, I was just trying to make it simpler.
Less restrictive?
Less restrictive.
Yeah. There you go.
I know it's getting late.
It's getting late, that's okay.
At some point, maybe you remove it altogether, but I'm not trying to reinvent solar wheels tonight. What do we have to, wind turbines?
Winter ones, or is that?
Yeah, so this was weird, it said setbacks can be reduced if the property owner says yes. The adjacent property owner. You never want a standard in your regulations that relies on neighbor approval. You need to be clear and unambiguous, so I've deleted that. We say that you have to have a fence, we don't say how high the fence is. If you have to have a four-foot fence around a pool, you're already saying you have to have a fence around a wind turbine, let's give it a height. I put four feet.
Yep.
Again, I'm not trying to make up whether it should have a fence, you already had that in there. I left it.
Yep.
Um, nothing else there. Those are pretty straightforward. Water and wastewater, I think S and T you can just combine. It's really just, again, clarifying the connections to state wastewater regulations. There's nothing substantive.
Page two.
Yeah, so... This is the connection to chapter eight, and saying that the wastewater official might say that the project is exempt from permitting. Pretty straightforward. Eleven oh-five, same thing. It's what do we need to know to issue a certificate of occupancy? Previously, we didn't have language that said that you had to have any sort of wastewater system built. Now this says more about what's required for a certificate of occupancy. We do an inspection right now, we had almost no standards. These are the same standards we're currently using. You have to meet what your approval says. Not groundbreaking, a little bit obvious, but it was missing. Design certifications, we had no requirement for them before for wastewater, now you do. Anything? No, okay.
That wasn't on our list.
I think that was T, eleven oh-five.
No, that's eleven oh-four, that's what it is.
Oh, the number was wrong, thank you.
No, but you have something under eleven oh-five, so...
Eleven oh-five, okay.
Let's give it.
Expiration. Ah, let me have, I want to have those. Oh, that should be eleven oh-four and oh-five. Same idea of expirations. Extend from twelve to eighteen months. A little bit more time for a zoning permit. People pull a permit for a pool, they're backordered, they can't get them constructed in twelve months. Your deck.
Sometimes longer.
Sometimes longer. Um, and again, this isn't completion, this is until you've reached substantial completion. We didn't define that, so now we've included fifty percent of the budget's been committed. We end up something, it's not perfect. But pouring a foundation is not fifty percent of a new home. But it's very difficult to define what substantial construction is.
So you say if they build a foundation and slab and they walk away from it for a while, after eighteen months, they have to renew the permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you build your foundation, your slab, you frame it, you got you've committed a lot of your budget to it, you're good. Takes you longer, that's fine.
It could be extended for another twelve months.
Well, once you reach fifty percent, there's no extension necessary. So it doesn't expire. Yeah. Um... Same thing under there. Okay, definitions. This one I realized, definition of inn. I realized when I was looking at the uses for LS three and LS four, I looked at LS one and LS two. Our definition of an inn previously said up to sixty rooms. So everyone had this idea for West Lake Shore of a cute little inn. So you look at the definition and you realize that cute little inn allowed sixty rooms. I don't think, I wasn't here, but I don't think the intention was for a holiday inn to exist in there. So I am proposing a change in the definition from sixty rooms. Bear with me, I'm on each.
To twenty.
To, did I say twenty? I can't remember.
Yeah.
Twenty. It's a number at the wall if you feel like that's still too much or too little. I looked up the definitions in other areas. I found anywhere from twelve to thirty.
What's the difference between an inn and a hotel, or a motel?
Well, there wasn't much before this. Um, but I think that the hotel has a uni, a number associated with it as well. And facilities. Maybe not, I don't know. I may not have looked into that one too much, cause it wasn't allowed in the Lake Shore anyway. Whereas inn is. That was the only reason I caught it.
This doesn't conflict with their B and B at all. Their B and B couldn't be twenty rooms.
No, and maybe hotel could use an improvement, but at least it's not allowed in the Lake Shore district. Um, but inn is.
Twenty's still a big number, I think.
Well, I think what, Summit's Corner, one of those buildings was originally supposed to be an inn. I don't know whether, I don't think it operates as an inn anymore.
Did get built.
I thought it did get built, but it's just never got operated as an inn.
No, those three big, they were dorms at one time, I don't know where they are.
Yeah, I think one of them was permitted as a dorm.
Yeah, they ended up never building it.
For the pharmacy college.
Yeah.
I thought the green building was originally supposed to be an inn.
It was, I was part of that deal.
They built it though.
They built a building, but not the inn.
Okay, so what is it, just?
It's, it was a dorm and now it's apartments, maybe?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. No, the inn was, actually, I think it was like twenty.
If it was an inn, it would've been that.
It would've been right there, right.
That would've been
It was a ballroom and the, it was a whole thing about ballroom dancing and they were gonna fill the inn. It's a thing, it's a huge thing out there, yeah. So you'd come into the thing and build up this
So this one came up when we were talking about the sewer line and people were fearful that West Lake Shore would become Lake George. And I was tasked with looking at, who could actually be allowed there? You know, we keep telling people, don't worry, it's not gonna be all this stuff. And then you look at the things that were allowed there and you saw inn of sixty rooms and we're like, oh, we've been telling people it's gonna be cute little stuffs. Um, and so I think this, or some proposal to limit that more is more in line with the intention. So inn is allowed on LS one, that is the lake side. Just to be clear. I don't think the intention was ever to allow sixty units
I think, I think even twelve is a large number for an inn on
Yeah.
Kinda defeats the purpose of it being an inn and
I have three ins, historically, ins are, can be pretty large.
On separate lots.
On separate lots, you could, so it'd be thirty-two rooms, but separate lots.
In separate ownership.
Mm-hmm. But ends in this, now we're talking about a structure in this particular area. So, how do we feel about the size of an inn in this particular area, right? I, I agree, twenty might be a bit much.
Just seemed pretty clear to me that sixty was
Yeah, we're way off.
Not what people intended.
No, it isn't.
I mean, you want it viable, you know?
I mean, imagine if somebody decided to buy the property where the little Lake Shore Pioneer Breakfast Place is right there and they banged sixty little units in there.
Yeah.
I think even twenty kinda changes the character of what you're shooting for there, or some of the old Jake DePorges property.
I did look around at other definitions in other communities around the globe. Um, I didn't specifically look at like, you know, like the mountain road of Stowe, and looked at small versus small versus larger. I'm just thinking of like what, what actually exists as an inn, I could do that. But I was just trying to cut it down from sixty.
Well, I don't know enough about LS one, you know what else is allowed? And there's a hotel allowed in LS one?
Not in LS one. No, and I think it's a conditional use no more than a certain number in LS two even.
Do you have any idea how many ins with, let's say, twenty rooms could be put into LS one?
Oh, a lot of large properties left, but there are a few. Like, there's some rebuilds that could happen. Um, like the Comcove area is a five-acre parcel.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the Pioneer Deli parcel is three acres maybe.
Where the dentist and hairstylist is right there, I'm not sure how big that is, but that could turn
Yeah, I think that's all one lot, right?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's separate, buildings separate lots, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think they're all the same lot, but they're, they're a fair-sized lot. I think you'd be looking at redevelopment, but and that's on LS one.
Twelve seems small, though. Twelve seems like a small building in today's world, make a couple bucks.
That's compromise, sixteen.
Sixteen? Sure. We're negotiating on the size for somebody.
I'm just trying to think of what a small hotel would be, you know?
Yeah.
So, since this is not the final, why don't we just leave it at twelve for now? We'll do some research ourselves and when we come back before we push it as a final, we can say, oh, twelve's not enough, or yeah, we're good.
So, yeah, highlight and we'll, we'll figure out a number. I mean, it won't be just LS one, is that the only, that's not the only place we allow it, right?
Yeah, let me, um, I'll do more research on it. I just wanted to throw it out. This is one of the first things that I changed, like, six months ago, that I've been sitting on. Um...
I think we're in agreement, sixty.
Prior to the sewer vote.
Yeah.
So I, I haven't really returned to it since then, but I could do some more.
Yeah, without the sewer, nobody's worried about the sixty number, cause it was never going to happen. But now we're in a different world.
It was just, it was hard to sit through the select board meetings and talk about what could happen when people were fearful and say, oh yeah, sixty units.
Yeah.
Oops. Um, okay, so I think what I can do for you there is I'll compare it with a hotel. And I'll just try to get you some local quick examples of what does twenty look like versus twelve. My guess is I can go to Stowe and figure it out real fast. Online Stowe, not actually drive to Stowe.
Yeah.
Field trip.
But if you wanna authorize a field trip, I'm totally totally good with that, too. Um... Excavation. I'm not even gonna point it out if it's just to exclude work exempt under state permitting. Doesn't count as excavation. Excavation's an important word because it defines what requires a permit. Um, chromatical organizational zoning map. Oh, sorry, I guess I should've talked about that one as part of... So there is a map. It basically shows exactly what you'd expect for LS three and four. It's divided by the road. Um, I made no changes to LS one and two. Just as a reminder, LS one and two does extend onto East Lake Shore. As we've, um, when, um...
Phyllis?
Yes.
When Phyllis is here, she reminds us of that, because she's on East Lake Shore, but she is in LS two.
Yeah.
Um, but it, it reflects that. It's available here. I haven't heard anything that... It, um, does overlap with the Sewer Service District, which I think is important when we talk about density. So the sewer, the new Sewer Service District is not just the properties, it's any property with frontage on that road. So the LS four, for example, does extend back if the property has frontage. So if it's a large property, it doesn't cut the property in half, which is not what happened with West Lake Shore. Larger properties like the Hazlet property are cut. LS two does not extend all of like the Hazlet property, for example. It stops at a at a, at a line that's pretty consistent across property boundaries. That's not the case here.
Yep.
That's it.
Very good.
We gotta talk timeline.
Yeah, we have to talk timeline.
Um, so your meetings are typically I'm trying to pull up some form of calendar here. First and third.
Yeah.
I know we got a little, no, we didn't get off, we're on third. So your next scheduled meeting would be August second. If we do two in August, you're looking at August second and August sixteenth? Sixteenth. We don't celebrate any fumbo today, do we? Just checking.
We should.
I have historically, which is why I ask. So it's not a holiday.
No.
Officially. Um, so, proceed with August second?
Definitely.
Do you want a copy that is clean enough to warn for a public hearing, a future public hearing?
I would think so, right? We're pretty good. Yes?
I think there's a lot
Couple old things that you
Yeah, you have to just come back, but I, I think we're pretty close.
Um, so as a matter of procedure, if you're very close, you could make those amendments, I would suggest making them live, and then you warn that draft for a date certain. Um, but it does, it's gonna require it'd require a lot of cleanup. Which I think I can do. I'm on vacation a little bit.
So why not shoot us some, an email in a week or so and say, hey, we're gonna be able to do it, or nope, we gotta pull the reins back?
Okay.
That way, there's no pressure on you to get it all jammed in and we'll know what's going on.
I'm actually not here on the second. How about it, yeah, why don't we hold the second, but I'll connect with Rich?
Is there a rush? I mean, is there somehow, is it, if we don't get it done, is something held up?
Um, I think we need to get it done to slow down some redevelopment of places along Lake Shore and the permits that are getting asked for.
And the bigger concern is to have something ready to warn, you need to have everything, you need to have the report. There's a full report that has to be written, you have to have all of the other things that are not included here, the cover sheet, the appendices. Um, that's, that's gonna be a that's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
So the alternative is to pick a date the following week or to look at August.
Ninth and sixteenth and banging out.
Sixteenth. Now, you could have a meeting on the second to finalize things. I could have somebody from my staff, come, Zach is great, um, with the idea that we warn on the sixteenth for a date in September. Could still have a meeting.
Right.
But I don't think I'll be able to get you a version ready to warn. Cause the day you issue the warning, you have to
Yeah. But we'll have, yeah, so we'll have a good copy.
I think you'll have a very good copy.
That we can look at, one last run.
And Zach will be there to do it for us, okay?
Right, change our hotel.
Change our hotel.
Change our hotel or inn.
I might actually have an inn that night.
That, that, that works. Yeah.
I think I'll actually, be having an inn.
There you go. Figure out how many rooms I got.
I will. I'll totally count them.
Yeah, that'll, that'll, that'll keep us on track.
Okay, so we're gonna hold, so you guys are gonna hold the second and the sixteenth.
And that second meeting will have only that on it.
Yes, and even the second, I'm gonna keep very light for you. It's just gonna be, here are the things that are left. It's mostly a clean version.
Yep.
You'll talk about the last bits of things and then it'll still give us two weeks to get a super clean version ready for
And all of the other stuff.
Yeah, it's all the other stuff that takes time.
Yeah. Yep.
So by the sixteenth, I'll have a report that has to get submitted. I'll have all of the other attachments and pages that existed in the regulations that you haven't seen, because there's no changes to.
Okay.
Lot of appendices and tables.
What date do you think it would be in September?
It depends on the newspaper cycle. So you have to have, um, fifteen days' warning, but they don't always publish the day you call them. Sometimes you need like a seven-day lead time. So I don't know, but I will come prepared with that date. Because when you warn it, you have to warn it for a date certain. But when you have meetings every two weeks and there's fifteen-day warning, it might be a month. So it might be the end of September.
Yep, sounds right. We're all good. Yeah? Very good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Lot of work.
Yeah.
Not quite, but it's pushing it.
Yeah, and we're not done yet, that's, uh...
But the next two, I promise, will not be long. And then you'll have the public hearing, which might be very long.
Yeah, right.
This is very good.
But August will be light.
Yep. Staff updates that, uh, necessary here? You're good on staff updates?
I don't have anything. I might, but I didn't prepare anything.
Yeah, that's fine, that's okay. Minutes of June first, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.